Good evening. I would like to call the MPO meeting to order. Will everyone please rise? I don't know if the flag is on here or not, but we're going to make believe there's one. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll give the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are going through some uncertain times, but we know that you are in control. We ask that you be with each and every one of us tonight as we make decisions to make this county a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. But Father, we ask that you be with all those that are suffering from this pandemic. We ask that you, if they're ill, you touch them with your healing hands. If they've lost loved ones, you put your arms and cupped around them. Oh, the God that we ask that you protect those that put their lives on the line for us each and every day, especially those that are in the healthcare industry that are in the halls and trying to make sure that those who are suffering are trying to come around. We ask that you put the, be on the, with our first responders, our military, our police, firefighters, everyone that's out there working to do whatever they can to bring some normalcy to life. And when we're done tonight, we ask that you take us back. If we're not home, take us back to our homes. If we are home, to make sure that everything is safe and sound. This is all blessed. We ask you in righteous and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Can we have a roll call to establish a quorum?
Good evening. Miller?
Here.
Anderson? Anderson or Klug? Petra?
Here.
Dingfelder?
Dingfelder, here.
Egan?
Here.
Harden?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Lopano?
Here.
Lot?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Marina?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. Before we get started, let's kind of set some ground rules. Number one, for those of us that have been using a different device, this virtual type device, I don't think has a hand indicator where I could see your hand when you want to speak. I don't think we have that. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when one of you, you want, when someone wants to speak, if I can't see you wave your hand, just say, I would like to speak and then tell me your name. So you can be recognized. That's the only way I can figure out how to do this. Secondly, we have a long agenda tonight. This is a public hearing. So please let's not go into dissertations about any issues. Just say what you have to say, please, and make it short. So we can at least get out of here at a decent hour tonight if that's all possible. Okay? We have the minutes from our May 13th, 2020 meeting. You should have received those in the, in the packet and have a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion, Jeff, for Overman.
Motion by Commissioner Overman is our second. That's a by Commissioner Kemp to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none on the discussion, please call the roll for a vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Petra?
Yeah.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lopano?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries sixteen to zero.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask this question. Who's keeping a list of those that signed up for public comments, whether it's other than the tip and on the tip?
Commissioner, that would be Cheryl Wilkning, your board executive assistant.
Okay. All right. We're now in the public comment on items other than the tip. Do we have anyone that's signed up for that? Someone has their mic open and there's a lot of background noise. Please mute your mic. Okay, again, do we have any public comments on items other than the tip?
Mr. Chair, I don't see a hand raised. There is no public comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We're now moving to committee reports. We'll start off with Mr. Bill Robinson, the CAC chair. Mr. Roberts, good afternoon. Good evening, brother.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the MPO board. I'll give the report from your Citizens Advisory Committee. Since your last meeting, the CAC has held three meetings. I will be brief as possible in summarizing the action there. We held a regular, a most recent meeting on June the 10th, at which time we took up the Transportation Improvement Program, and I'll report in summary the information that's included in your packet. On table two, on the MPO's list of priorities for new funding, priority number three, we passed a motion recommending that T-BARDA consider adding multimodal connections in that funding system. Secondly, we passed a motion asking that priority number twelve, thirty-five, and forty-seven of the tip be moved up on the list of priorities for your consideration. Thirdly, we passed a motion supporting the efforts to advance the overwhelming I-75 Gibsonton Road Gibson Drive Interchange, which is priority number thirty-four. And as an interim measure, we suggest an evaluation of traffic, of a traffic signal to enable eastbound vehicles to make a left turn. The CAC also passed motions recommending to strike several items from the tip. Those recommendations include priority thirty-one, priority thirty-two, project four, three, four, zero, four, five, dash, two, which is adding the express lanes on I-75 from south of Lower Street Avenue to east of the Hillsborough River. And project four, three, one, seven, four, six, dash, two, which is the design to add express lanes on I-4 from the Selma Connector to east of Branch Ford Road. With those four recommendations, the CAC passed a motion recommending the rest of the tip be approved by this board. Our May twentieth meeting, we considered two items which are on your consent agenda today. In addition, we addressed some unfinished business. The CAC voted to agree with the Tampa CRA in support of the use of the CSX lines as a top priority. However, the CAC members did not agree with CRA's recommended motion in opposition to tolls on the interstate within the city limits. This was a much discussed issue. It's come before us and it's come before you, I think, previously. And finally, following a letter, receipt of a letter from Chris Vail of the CAC, also voted to oppose the proposed exit from the downtown interchange at the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets exit. On May twenty-seventh, the CAC held a workshop on the tip. It lasted a couple of hours. We had a vigorous discussion and it enabled us to have our June tenth meeting. Now, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of your CAC. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate it very much. We have the Ms. Wanda West for the MPO staff.
Hi, good evening. Wanda West, MPO staff. Committees approved and forwarded the 2018, 2019 Public Participation Measures of Effectiveness Report and the 2020 Public Participation Plan Amendments, which are consent items on your agenda. The Vision Zero Speed Management Action Plan was approved and forwarded as well. Also approved, also approved and forwarded was the Fiscal Year 2025 Transportation Improvement Program, which is an action item on the agenda. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee voted to recommend approval of the tip, which the request with the request that FDOT and local agencies reevaluate the need for large roadway projects based on reduced demand as a result of changing changing commuting patterns now and in the future as a result of COVID-19. Other presentations made to committees include the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority Project Update and PDNE Advanced Notification for Whiting Street and Washington Street Extensions and Selma Expressway Ramp Reconfiguration, Hillsborough County Area Quality Status, Performance Evaluation of E-Scooter Sharing in the City of Tampa, Florida Transportation Plan and Highway Safety Plan Update, Plant-City Transit Plan. The Policy Committee heard a presentation of T-BARDA's draft Regional Transit Development Plan and received a staff recommendation to support the plan and concept with the caveat that funding for the transportation, for the local transit agencies must not be reduced. Local transit must be held harmless as regional services are expanded. After discussion, a motion was not made. The committee was also briefed by USF Professor on changes in travel patterns locally during the pandemic as a result of expanding telecommuting. There were also, there was also a briefing from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council on Hurricane evacuation and how clearance times are estimated. Members asked about use of a contra-flow lane, use of road shoulders, opportunities to expand shelter in place, and shelter nearby capacity and access to fuel during evacuation. These topics, sorry. These topics can be explored further in partnership with the TBRPC and the MPO's upcoming study of evacuation scenarios. The B-PAC discussed upcoming tri-county coordination meetings and hold on a virtual retreat in July. The Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board reviewed and approved an annual update on the Transportation Disadvantaged Service Plan. The board reviewed and approved a proposed evolution of the Tri-County Transportation Disadvantaged Subcommittee to an annual subcommittee that will advise the TMA Leadership Group. The group also received an update on operations from Sunshine Line. Sunshine Line has adapted their operations due to COVID-19 to enforce social distancing. The June twenty-sixth meeting was Michelle Olavie's last before her retirement. She has faithfully served the TDCB for the past ten years, and her dedication and passion will be missed. Effective July first, Joshua Barber will serve as staff liaison to the Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board. Staff received emails from Mauricio Rosas, who suggested the county and the city apply for funding for rail capital projects and inquired about the Invest Invest Act. Secretary Glenn will provide a response on the Invest Act to Mr. Rosas when the information becomes available. Sarah Powell, Lifesavers Program Coordinator, thanked Beth for her efforts and presentation. Gary Recart stated that FDOT has dumped gallons of poison storm water from I-275 north of I, the I-4 interchange into the Hillsborough River. Jose Menendez emailed regarding bike sales soaring during the pandemic. Lena Young Green and Kitty Wallace thanked staff for their work on the Row Community Gardens Tampa Bay webinar. Tip-related Facebook comments, voicemail messages, and emails received prior to the meeting will be included in the summary of comments submitted in the advanced on, advanced comments section later for the tip. The information in its entirety was provided to all board members electronically prior to the meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. West. We appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. We're now moving to consent agenda. We had three items on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved. It's Overman.
Mr. Overman, second by whom?
Harden, second.
By Mr. Harden, is in a discussion on the consent agenda, in a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Petra?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lopano?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Ross? Hey, Ross?
If you called Ross, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
I'm getting feedback. Ms. Stewart?
I think she said yes.
Yes. Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries sixteen to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to the public hearing on the tip and the annual update. We will first have a presentation by Ms. Sarah McKinley, the MPO staff. We'll then move into public comment. And before we move into public comment, I want to ask staff, how many people do we have signed up for public comment?
There is thirty-two pre-registered.
Thirty-two? Have we cut off, have we cut off signing up for public comment at this point?
Yes, we have.
Okay, very good. All right. Ms. McKinley, you're recognized.
Great. Good evening. My name's Sarah McKinley with the MPO staff. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this evening, I'm going to give the update for the new Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal years twenty-one through twenty-five. This will become effective on October one of this year. And we're also updating our priority list for our projects for future funding. So the first portion of the presentation will be just an overview of what the tip is. Then I'll go into the highlights of what's being funded this year. So what's new or any big changes between the last work program? And then the last half of the presentation will deal with the priorities. So as far as what the tip is, the tip is the five-year work program. It's also our first five years of our Long Range Transportation Plan, which we just updated in November. We again list the highlights and major changes from each year. It is the financial plan for all federal funds that are spent on the transportation projects within Hillsborough County. And we are to show every project with each phase and the amount of funding over the next five years. We also include our locally funded capital improvement program for transparency and coordination purposes. As far as the MPO's role, the MPO sets the priorities for what amounts to be about fifteen to twenty million in discretionary funds. These are from two federal programs. The first being the Transportation Alternatives Program. So these are the non-motorized walk-bike projects. And then we have our Surface Transportation Program, which covers all the other projects on our priority list. There is also two state-funded regional projects or programs that we utilize for region-wide priorities. The first is the Transportation Regional Incentives Program. And then we also have the Sun Trail Program. And this year, I'll note, we got our first bit of Sun Trail money on one of our trail projects. As far as the MPO Board's role, they do have the ability to remove any federally funded projects from the list. But once that projects removed, they cannot direct how those monies be spent. As far as where we are in the process, last year, June twenty nineteen, we updated the priorities and adopted the work program. In December of each year, we get what we call the tentative work program. And that sort of goes over what the highlights are that we expect. And then in April, we get what we call the snapshot, and that's what's used to develop the tip document. Here we are tonight, June thirtieth, having our public hearing. Again, we're updating the five-year work program along with our priority list, which is also known as Table Two. And then we'll wrap up any changes that come out of tonight and submit the document to the feds and FDOT for review by July fifteen. So as far as what we have in the work program this year, it amounts to about three point six billion dollars. One point four billion of that is the West Shore Interchange Project. So that's why we see a bit more money than we typically had in the past work programs. And then we have the local capital improvement programs. Again, those are included, those amount to about two point one billion this year. Right. As far as the breakdown of the work types and the funding for the FDOT work program, as you can see, we have the ports and airports still maintain a good chunk of the pie with about thirty-seven percent. Based on the CAC, we were asked to separate out the rail. We typically had the ports, airports, and freight rail all in one slice. That does amount for point one-two percent or just over six point six million in state funds. We also have our road widening category. This does also include, again, the West Shore Interchange, Howard Franklin Bridge, and Section Five from Lower Street to the Hillsborough River, and this amounts for thirty-six percent. Our bridge and maintenance, this includes our resurfacing programs as well, is just under thirteen percent. The Transit and Transportation Demand Management, just under four percent. Our intersections, interchanges, signals, and our use of technology, this is about seven point six percent. We then have our planning and studies. This includes one point four-nine percent. And then our walk-bike at point seven-one percent. This is a table that we've been tracking over the last few years. And this just shows those percent of work types and how they've fluctuated over the year. Again, you see a large increase in capacity this year because of that West Shore Interchange project being included. And then this is the same chart, but looking at what's in the local capital improvement programs. Again, this amounts for about two point one billion. And a large portion of this, as you see there, is the ports and airports at eighty percent. And then we have all of our other additional planning categories and work types there. As far as the allocation of funds for the transportation alternatives in the Surface Transportation Program, these were the two federally funded programs that I mentioned that the MPO Board sets the priorities for. This is sort of a breakdown of what was included over the next five years for those programs based on our priorities. And those include Division Zero corridor studies. We have the Columbus Bridge replacement study that the county prioritized. Some improvements on Highland as part of the Heights Mobility Plan. We also have heart bus replacements that we continue to prioritize about four million every year for. We then have our integrated corridor management. This is looking at technology along parallel corridors of the interstates to help ease congestion. And then at the bottom there, you can see our walk-bike safety improvements. This amounts for about fourteen percent of the priorities that we've funded. And including, as you see, the Doyle Carlton Roundabout, we have Central and Ola Avenue adding the bikeways through there. We've finally finished funding the Greenspine. You'll see those projects a little later. El Prado, moving toward complete streets, Floro-Braska Avenue. This is a project that's coming back and being advanced. And then Kennedy Boulevard, Florida Avenue improvements, and then as well as our West River Greenway. Great. So this portion of the presentation, I'm going to get into what are the major project highlights. So this is what's new from last year to this year's work program. As part of the It's Time 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, we have our performance measures and our performance-based planning programs that we include. And those are the first four that are listed here. This is the Good Repair and Resiliency, Vision Zero, Smart Cities, Real Choices When Not Driving. And then the fifth category there, that's our major capacity projects, the sort of big-ticket multimillion-dollar projects. We also include, based on federal guidance, our performance targets and standards. Right. So as far as our Good Repair and Resiliency, this includes resurfacing, maintaining the current transit system, as well as our bridge repairs. There are four new resurfacings that were included within the work program. We also have, again, the Hart Bus Replacement, as well as the Hart Bus Stop Capital Repairs. This is a new program that we're trying to annually fund a million dollars for Hart to use to update their bus stops. We also have a bridge replacement, I-75 over the Alfire River, as well as some substructure repair work at various locations throughout the county. For our Vision Zero, this is our walk-bike safety projects. The first one we have there is Fowler Avenue. This is I-275 to I-75. This is, design has been added for fiscal year twenty-five for safety enhancements along the corridor. We then have four new design safety projects from FDOT. This is Twenty-First Ave, Twenty-Second Street, One Hundred Ninth Ave, and Tampa Palms Boulevard. Again, each of these are looking at complete street safety projects with design in fiscal year twenty-one. We got as part of our new priority list, a priority from the city of Tampa to look at Inner Bay from Manhattan to Bay Shore. The design was also funded for this for fiscal year twenty-one. We have lighting that is being added throughout the county. Those projects can be detailed in the appendix of the document as well. And then we have Fortieth Street. This was a project that originally was to look at the inclusion of roundabouts on the southern portion of Fortieth from sixty to Hillsborough. A project development and environmental phase has been added for fiscal year twenty-five. And this will include looking at not only the roundabouts, but other treatments that would be possible there. And then with this study, additional public outreach will be included as well. We're going to have Fiftieth, Fifty-Sixth Street from State Road sixty, Atomode to Fletcher, looking at Vision Zero Safety Operation improvements. Design's been added for fiscal year twenty-five. And this is an FDOT-sponsored project. For our Smart City Program, again, this is the use of technologies to improve congestion, as well as updating our intersections and signal improvement. We have two signals being added. These are pedestrian crosswalk signals along Florida Avenue, the first at Idlewild and the second at Millwood for design and twenty and construction in fiscal year twenty-one. We have some interchange improvements. This is on I-4 towards the Polk County Line. Design has been added for fiscal year twenty-five. We have our intelligent transportation system. This looks at, again, more technology to help with congestion. There's a project being constructed in fiscal year twenty-five towards the Gandy Bridge at Dale Mayberry. Our final performance measure-based program, again, is our Real Choices When Not Driving. This looks at the expansion of our transit system, as well as our trails. As you see, we have the Greenspine Cycle Track. This is two A and three C for construction in fiscal year twenty-two. These are the two final projects for that. So the Greenspine is now officially fully funded for construction. We then have the West River Greenway. This is the Stewart Middle School Connector for construction in fiscal year twenty-four. The last project you see here is the South Coast Greenway with the Big Bend Pedestrian Overpass. This is the first bit of Sun Trail monies that we received within Hillsborough. within Hillsborough County, and this is for design in fiscal year '21. Our final category is our major investments. We have I-275 at Gibsonton Interchange. This is for design in fiscal year '25. We know this is a major project also for the county and for the department. We work closely with them and continue to, to try to advance this project for the total rebuild of the interchange. And our final highlight is the Tampa Bay Next sort of status update. We have the I-275 Howard Franklin Bridge that has moved to Table One for construction and design build fiscal year '20. We then have, again, the 1.4 billion for design build in fiscal year '24 for the West Shore Interchange. And then 442 million design build fiscal years '24 and '25. This is I-275 from Loes to Ulo. These are the ramps that will come out of, or go into and come out of the West Shore Interchange towards downtown Tampa. We then have I-275, the Downtown Interchange. There was a partial funding for this. This is construction in fiscal year '21, 48 million for the operational improvements. This is looking at the going from I-4 to I-275. This will help with the backup that is created with the traffic coming on at Floro-Braska, as well as the merging of the interstates. We then have I-275 north of the Downtown Interchange. There's no construction funding for this project yet. There is 46 million that was added for design for fiscal year '21. In this map, I include just sort of, as reference, when we're discussing what the different segment and sections are for the Tampa Bay Next projects. All right, so that's the first portion of our presentation. Now I'm going to get into the TIP priorities. These are for fiscal years '22 through '26, or really just future funding as it becomes available. We tie our prioritization process directly to our longer-range transportation plan as well. Our first category, we have the Good Repair and Resiliency. Again, this is maintaining our current bus system, as well as our bridges and our resurfacing. This program is sort of the top of the list as sort of projects that need to be maintained and done. We also then have our Vision Zero. Again, this is our safety program. In this, we look at total crashes, severe crashes, as well as crashes per centerline mile, and then rank the projects based on that. Our final program is our Smart Cities, again, using technology to help ease congestion. This, we look at travel time reliability as a factor. We then have our Real Choices When Not Driving. This looks at our density rating based on population and jobs. So how do we best increase accessibility to jobs? We then have our final program, the Major Investments. Again, these are big multimillion-dollar projects. And we look at the forecasted travel demand, as well as job density and the delay reduction. All right, as far as updating our priorities, this is sort of something that feels like it continues throughout the year. Again, we last updated the priorities June 11th of last year. In February, we go out and meet with all of our local agencies and partner agencies in the jurisdictions and discuss any existing priorities, as well as new priorities that might be coming up. We then ask for a letter from the jurisdiction by the middle of March, and then any new priorities that require applications to be processed. We ask that we get those by the end of March and submit them to the department. We then bring any new priorities to our committees for review. We did this year have a workshop with the Policy Committee on March 24th to review the priorities that we've received so far. And then here we are, June 30th, for our public hearing to update the priorities. So as far as our new priorities that we've received, we have the TIBARDA van pool. And as a request from the CAC, also to have flexibility to be able to use these monies for any travel demand management-related services. The request was for 800,000 in fiscal year '26. We recommended 200,000 annually. We met with both TIBARDA and the department, and they were in agreement with our recommendation. We have two new projects that were submitted by the city of Tampa with Hillsborough County. This was for Inner Bay Boulevard from West Shore to Bay Shore. This project was the one that had design added for fiscal year '21. The city is requesting 4.5 million for walk bike safety improvements. And then we also have twigs from Ashley to Nebraska. Same thing, safety enhancements, requesting 3 million for construction. We have State Route 574 MLK from US 301 to Turkey Creek Road. This was submitted by the department for safety improvements, looking at multimodal safety improvements, including medians, bike lanes, filling in sidewalk gaps, ADA improvements, also innovative intersections as well. The project that you see there highlighted in red, this was submitted after we did bring this presentation to the CAC. This was from city of Tampa. This is looking at what they're calling the North Downtown Grid Multimodal Improvements. This is sort of looking at enhancements to Ashley Drive. This is a joint project with the department and city of Tampa, and they've requested 5.2 million for construction of this project. Right, our final list of priorities, we have the State Route 60, Adamo at 26th Street for a new traffic signal. This was submitted by city of Tampa. This would need to be implemented by the department for about $500,000. We have another traffic signal, again, Spruce Boy Scout at Manhattan Avenue. Same thing, this is on a FDOT facility, and again, requesting about $500,000. We then have our State Route 60 from Dover to Polk County Line. This was submitted by the department for a project development and environmental phase. This is looking at intersection improvements, so to improve some of the safety and function of the intersections along that corridor. We then have a Hart CSX study. This is 3.5 million requested by Hart. This is sort of the next phase of any negotiations or right-of-way estimates that would be needed to move forward with that project. We then have the Fowler Avenue Underpass PDNE that was requested from the city of Temple Terrace. We then have our final two Hart priorities. This is our electric bus and bus infrastructure for 25 million, and then the automated vehicles facility and infrastructure for 5 million. All right, I also included a summary of the Coordinating Committee, or MPOCCC, recommendations. At the top, those are all the funded priorities that we've had throughout the region, including the I-75 at Big Ben Interchange and the West Shore Interchange as well. Our unfunded or partially funded priorities continue to include the I-75 at Gibsonton. We also have the operational improvements north of downtown. And then our, the regional rapid transit in the I-275 corridor, as well as continued support for Hart's CSX negotiations. As far as our committee recommendations, these were also given as part of the committee reports. And the Citizens Advisory Committee had quite a few motions that were made, including the update to the TIBARDA van pool to consider multimodal connections, the Heights Mobility Improvement, the modern streetcar extension, and the modern streetcars requested by both the city of Tampa and Hart to advance those or move those priorities up on the priority list. There is also a motion passed to continue to support and elevate the I-75 at Gibsonton interchange improvements, as well as looking at an interim traffic signal to help with the traffic there. The four projects or priorities that they recommended striking were the I-275 north of downtown. We also had the operational improvements. This is I-4, or I-275. We then have two projects. We have the I-275 from Loes to Hillsborough River. And then the final one, the I-4 from the Selman Connector to east of Branch Forbes Road. The final committee recommendations, the BPA, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, recommended that we, the committee voted to recommend the approval of the tip, but also requested that FDOT and local agencies reevaluate the need for large roadway projects based on the patterns we're now seeing and what will happen in the future as a result of COVID-19. And then the Technical Advisory Committee and the Livable Roadways Committee both approved the tip with no recommendations for changes. So with that, that concludes my presentation. This, we do have the recommended action to the board to approve the Transformation Improvement Program for fiscal years '21 through '25, as well as the Transportation Improvement Program priorities for future funding. So with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. McKinley. We're now moving to the public hearing. Right now, we're allocating three minutes per speaker. We have, I think they said 30-some hours speakers, which came out to a little over hour and a half worth of public testimony. So we're going to go into the, the public hearing. If there's any questions concerning that. Staff, you have the first name to come forth.
Yes, the first speaker is Rick Holmans.
So Holmans, you have three minutes. May I ask another question, staff? Do you have a timer there?
The clerk has a timer.
Okay, very good. Mr. Holmans, you recognize.
Great, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My message to you this evening is very simple. We urge you to 100% support the tip as proposed by your staff. We believe that the tip presents a balanced approach to including roads, transit, bike, and pedestrian improvements. Most importantly, the projects contained in the tip represent a lot of listening, responding, and compromising on the part of everybody involved. We're aware that there have been calls to dismantle the tip and remove key segments of the improvements planned for I-275. In our opinion, these changes would negatively impact the West Shore Interchange, delay much-needed safety improvements to the Downtown Interchange, and undermine efforts to incorporate much-needed transit options into the I-275 corridor, including the regional rapid transit and the arterial BRT planned from downtown to USF. As we eventually come through this health and economic crisis, many experts believe that Florida communities, including Tampa Bay, will see an accelerated influx of new residents seeking to move from the densely populated cities of the Northeast and Midwest. It's important now more than ever that we anticipate the growth that's coming and add the multimodal capacity to welcome it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Next speaker, Dave Sobish.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the MPO Board. Dave Sobish, 4300 West Cypress Street. And I merely speak to ask you to approve the staff recommendation and approve the Transportation Improvement Program as outlined for you this evening. Thank you.
Okay, sir, next.
David Green.
It's green, you can recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Green, Executive Director of TIBARDA. And just want to express our support for TB Next and all of its various segments. TIBARDA understands the importance of our transportation corridors and our responsibility to improve and increase their capacity as required by a rapidly growing population. And in fact, we agree that, you know, simply building more highways is not the solution. Just as expanding transit alone won't fix our problems. We're committed to reducing traffic congestion by providing more efficient regional transit, including a bus rapid transit project now in development for I-275. TB Next allows us to expand BRT options and in turn reduce the number of cars on our interstate. We can meet today's needs and alleviate further need to expand our highways again and again. But we can't benefit from the reduced traffic regional BRT will bring if we don't improve our infrastructure. TB Next accommodates space for transit, which in turn will help us reduce the number of cars using the highway now and for years to come. The tip as proposed matches our recommended regional transportation objectives and our region-wide priorities. And we would oppose any effort that would eliminate or alter any part of TB Next. Not only would this deprive Tampa Bay residents of much-needed improvements to our interstates, but it would reduce business competitiveness compared to other peer regions across the country and adversely impact the proposed regional BRT project. So again, TIBARDA supports the recommended build alternatives associated with TB Next. And we suggest that you all approve the tip as proposed by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Can you repeat the name, please?
Staff, will you repeat the name again? Go to the next name, please.
Good evening, MPO members. This is Karen Kress. I'm representing the Tampa Downtown Partnership. We serve as a steward of downtown Tampa, proactive leadership organization. We act as an advocate for the downtown community, including over 240 member companies, 14,000 residents, and 58,000 employees. Our organization has a long history of support for multimodal options of transportation. This includes micro-mobility services, such as the downtown, or coast bike shares, scooters, cross bay ferry, street car line, et cetera. As a regional hub with massive population growth projections, our organization also understands the value of investment in our current interstate system. Therefore, we support the projects related to the interstate as outlined in the TIP. Let's adopt an all-of-the-above investment strategy that includes both transit. The interstate envelope is key to connect West Shore and downtown to the University of South Florida area and the region. The partnership is encouraged by the state's investment in both the Howard Franklin Bridge and the State Route 60 West Shore Interchange. We understand there's not currently funding for the Downtown Interchange beyond the proposed Option E operational and safety improvements. It's important to continue the conversation and explore modal options. The partnership also supports the need to include a regional premium transit system with a dedicated right-of-way. We will continue to work with FDOT and the city of Tampa on impacts through our downtown neighborhoods and to preserve Ashley Drive as downtown's grand boulevard. This can be accomplished in part through design and signage to encourage more use of the downtown east exit. And last, during construction and beyond, compliance of Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, measures should be put into place supporting bicycle, pedestrian, and transit improvements for Tampa's downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Chairman and Board members. Don Skelton, 4350 West Cypress Street. Tonight, I come before you as the President of the West Shore Alliance. We're here to express our support of the proposed TIP completely as presented. The West Shore District is the region's largest business district and has homed over 4,000 businesses, over 100,000 employees, and a growing residential population, and significant regional institutions, including Tampa International Airport and Hillsborough Community College. Transportation is critical for economic success. The I-275 State Route 60 West Shore Interchange has been in need of improvement for decades. The widening of I-275 over the last 10 years, the expansion of Veterans Express Way, and the impending replacement and widening of the it is even more important to construct that West Shore Interchange. As businesses chart their recovery from the impacts of COVID pandemic, transportation is a key element. With the region's largest concentration of hotels, access and connections to downtown and other parts of the region are essential. The Alliance's master plan for the area, which includes elements for walkability, mobility, transformation, and economic expansion, depends on the transportation improvements that have been planned for years, including interstate and enhanced transit plans. It's important to maximize the value of transportation investment like the down, like the West Shore Interchange by connecting to downtown. While we know that the commuting patterns may change, that's to be determined. While we know that the commuting patterns may change, that's to be determined to what extent that they are, we do know that congestion is still expected and will continue to grow. Again, we've already seen it happening. We strongly support approving the proposed TIP as presented. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Next.
Next is Doug Jessif, and he has four attendees donating their time. That will be Doreen Jessif, Linda Yakel, Stacy Jenkins, and Jennifer Alfonso.
Who's the speaker?
Doug Jessif.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Doug Jessif.
Oh, Doug Justice, okay, so you have 12 minutes.
I thought it would be 15 if we're three minutes each, but we'll do it.
No, no, you're right. You have yourself, that's 15.
All right. So my name is Doug Jessif. I'm a professor at USF. I hold a PhD from Princeton, and my interests include logic and the foundations of statistics. And I'm here to urge that you accept the recommendation of your CAC and remove items 31, 32, 43045, and 431746 from the tip. These are interstate expansion projects recycled from the failed TVX initiative, and they face widespread and unyielding opposition from local citizens. To begin, we must note the appalling history of Tampa's interstates. As originally conceived, American interstate system was intended to function much like the German Autobahn, linking urban areas by means of high-speed, limited-access roadways, but not barreling through urban areas. This original scheme was modified by American highway planners so as to put interstates through cities, and that entailed the destruction of many residential neighborhoods. By both law and custom, American cities were segregated when the interstate system was developed. This made the choice of urban interstate alignments quite easy. Avowed segregationists simply directed them through non-white neighborhoods with the explicit intention of damaging them while promoting the growth of all-white suburbia. As the system was developed in Tampa, both I-4 and I-275 were aligned with the explicit purpose of inflicting maximum damage on black and Hispanic neighborhoods, and all for the greater glory of newly developing suburbs. This is the system we have today, and the demographics have changed only marginally. Expanding that system requires sacrifices by neighborhoods that have already paid a huge price, and the people who are the principal intended beneficiaries live in suburbs with an overwhelmingly white demographic. In effect, the Tampa interstate system is a gigantic Confederate monument. You should treat it as such. Now, I expect that a parade of aggrieved white suburbanites will come before you to explain that the pain they endure from congested freeways demands that FDOT's plans be approved regardless of the costs imposed on residents in the urban core. I neither believe nor contend that such people are vile bigots like those who designed the Tampa interstate system. Nevertheless, the burden is on them to explain how and why expanding a system dreamed up by loathsome racists does not amount to doubling down on their heinous schemes and endorsing their goals. Until proponents of items 31, 32, and the rest can make that case, these items should be dismissed out of hand. I should add that it is insufficient for proponents of interstate expansion to say, oh, well, that was a long time ago, we're sort of sorry about it and all, but hey, we have to deal with the world as it is, so let's make the best of it and expand the interstate. Reasoning of that sort supposes that the injustice committed decades ago was a one-time affair that can now be safely overlooked. But in fact, the damage is ongoing. Residents of the communities that were targeted continue to face poor health, economic disruption, compromised mobility, and other damages caused by urban interstates. I know that you cannot magically undo the original injustice of the Tampa interstate system, but you are under a moral obligation not to make that injustice worse. Expanding these interstates perpetuates and compounds that injustice, and you are therefore obligated to reject FDOT's plans for interstate expansion. Now, I suppose that one might concede that Tampa's interstate system is a hot racist mess, but still maintain that it provides an economic benefit that somehow outweighs its enormous costs. This seems to be FDOT's position when it places planned interstate expansion under the rubric of major investments for economic growth. But do urban interstates promote economic growth? And the evidence on this point is unequivocal. Interstates in urban areas create dead zones that yield no net economic benefit. And in fact, it's easy to show that urban interstates are not required for economic growth. This is easily seen by examining cases where such interstates were suddenly taken out of commission. Consider the collapse of the I-35W Bridge in Minneapolis in August of 2007. That took out an eight-lane urban freeway without warning. And if I-35 had been a major economic contributor, this event would have produced catastrophic losses to the local economy. However, the analysis by the Federal Reserve of Minneapolis showed that no such outcome took place. Economic activity for the third and fourth quarters of 2007 remained on track, and the first three quarters of the following year showed growth. Initial job losses from the I-35W bridge collapse numbered in the dozens and were quickly made good, with no discernible negative effects on household income, manufacturing, real estate, or any other measure of economic activity. People and goods got where they needed to go, and the economic contribution of I-35W was at best marginal. And that case is by no means isolated. Similar results were associated with events of the same sort. We can also see that urban interstates do not bring economic growth with them, contrary to the claims made by FDOT and its partners in the road construction industry. To see this, consider the case of the city of Detroit. Two massive interstates, I-75 and I-94, run through that city, and its three downtown interchanges managed to make our malfunction junction look relatively modest. And how has Detroit fared economically since the interstates were rammed through the heart of the city? We all know it's been decade upon decade of decline. Now, I don't claim that Detroit's freeway system is solely responsible for the city's economic demise, but it is clear that the interstates have done nothing to help. So summing it all up, we can take it as a matter of established economic fact that putting interstates through urban areas is neither necessary nor sufficient to secure economic growth. In light of these established economic facts, how are we to understand FDOT's claim that expanding I-275 and I-4 is some magic elixir that will produce substantial economic growth? The answer lies in the economic modeling that FDOT has developed. Their analysis examines three alternatives. First is no build, the second is to build non-toll express lanes, and the third is to build toll express lanes. Their model predicts that no build would end up harming the economy, while the addition of non-toll express lanes will, they say, have some positive impact. Ah, but express toll lanes, these, they say, are predicted to be the magic bullet that will produce massive job growth, increased property values, and all manner of additional economic benefits. This is remarkable in view of the fact that the experience of other urban areas shows express toll lanes to be a catastrophic failure. In Atlanta, Charlotte, Seattle, Miami, and elsewhere, express toll lanes have never lived up to the hype. They don't bring in the projected amount of revenue, and they don't ease congestion. And on the whole, they offer no measurable economic advantage. So how can this sort of project that has failed elsewhere turn out to be a good bet for success in Tampa? And the answer is that it cannot. FDOT's model is a classic instance of the old adage, garbage in, garbage out. If you ask to see the underlying assumptions upon which the whole scheme is based, you learn that the modeling is done by proprietary software known as TransSite, which sounds really hip and edgy, but isn't. Because only the select few are permitted to look at the guts of the modeling, we ordinary mortals must try to reverse engineer its parameters by gathering up whatever inputs and outputs we can scrape together and comparing them with the model's predictions. I have done some of this, and I can report that the model looks like a gigantic, well-oiled bullshit machine. Take an urban freeway expansion.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. If you're going to use foul language, we're going to cut you off, sir.
All right. Garbage machine. So take an urban freeway expansion project such as I-77 in Charlotte, I-95 in Miami, or the Katy Freeway in Houston. Look at the employment, household income, and manufacturing numbers pre and post-construction, and what do you find? Well, these projects generate some significant short-term employment gains in the road construction business, but are otherwise unimpressive as an economic stimulus. Once the lanes are added, things revert back to more or less what they were, with some loss due to the expansion of the dead zone on I-275 freeway. And this is, of course, consistent with what research generally shows, so we can conclude that the TransSite modeling that FDOT's employing is highly suspect. The FDOT model also predicts, believe it or not, a so-called amenity premium that boosts home values located near the interstate. Examining FDOT's own reported home value data and combining that with the literature I've examined, it shows clearly that this is an illusion. Even by FDOT's own admission, houses within a half mile of an urban interstate suffer a loss, but the literature does show a home value premium for housing near an interstate when those houses are located in so-called greenfield developments in suburbia, which is an utterly beside-the-point comparison when we're examining the case of urban interstates. So what we have here is the kind of dishonest model manipulation that gives statistics a bad name. I am a professor by trade, and I hand out grades as part of my job. I can say with great confidence that if some befuddled graduate student submitted work of this quality to a seminar on statistical methods, that student would flunk the seminar and get tossed out of the graduate program, and apparently would find gainful employment in the road construction business. Well, then, what are we to do about traffic congestion? If FDOT's analysis is correct, congestion is the great enemy, and adding lanes to interstates is the only way to beat it. In particular, they tell us that congestion reduces household incomes, decreases job opportunities, drives up costs, and generally suppresses the economy. So in FDOT's modeling, New York City must be an impoverished backwater, while the blissfully uncongested interstates of Detroit are a surest indication of a vibrant local economy. The first thing to note here is that FDOT puts current congestion delays at 40 hours per driver per year. Assuming that a typical driver uses the interstate 300 days a year, this amounts to eight minutes of delay per driver per day. And in the context of a commute, that would be four minutes per trip. This does not amount to a crisis. But assume that the area will see significant population growth in the coming decades, and that we will see a 50% increase in delays, bringing the delay to 12 minutes per driver per day at some future point. Is this a crisis that demands urgent action? It's difficult to see how it could be. If people want to move here, they will surely know the score. And if 12 daily minutes of interstate delay is simply too much to handle, they can make other choices. Beyond that, however, we need to ask whether adding lanes to urban interstates does anything to reduce congestion and improve travel times. Here, the evidence is entirely unequivocal. Adding lanes does nothing to ease congestion or to minimize crashes. The phenomenon of induced demand has been extensively researched. It's understood both theoretically and empirically. And indeed, we have abundant evidence from Los Angeles, Denver, Houston, Chicago, Atlanta, and elsewhere that conclusively shows the futility of trying to pave our way out of congestion. Why, then, should we think that an approach that has failed everywhere else will magically work in Tampa? And until those who support interstate expansion are prepared to offer an independent reason to think that what has failed everywhere else will somehow succeed here, you should simply ignore them. But now, let's suppose you think that we must make operational improvements to the local interstate and can thereby hope to make these roadways safer and less congested. The record shows that this hope is entirely in vain. I make my point by recalling the sad history of malfunction junction and the so-called improvement program that lasted from 2003 to 2007, gobbling up more than $130 million in today's money. Back then, FDOT's John McShaffey boasted, quote, "We are ready to put more function into that junction," close quote. And Mr. McShaffey promised that the addition of lanes and the fancy flyover ramp linking southbound 275 to I-4 would improve traffic flow, it would lower traffic, travel times, and it would reduce crashes. You all know how that turned out. The project was a complete failure by any reasonable measure, and it resulted in the current malfunction junction that FDOT now says requires serious expansions and upgrades that will cost many hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, judging strictly by malfunction junction, I am tempted to conclude that the Engineering Brain Trust at FDOT District 7 could, if given an hour, find a way to open a wine bottle without breaking it, provided that the wine bottle has a screw top. The record shows that you cannot seriously think that authorizing this outfit to upgrade the local interstate system could possibly lead to a good outcome. They botched the job 15-plus years ago, and now they want to turn that failure into a success by making it bigger. No rational person could support this kind of thinking. To conclude, then, we have to say that the recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Committee should be accepted. They are the people who are closest to the citizens of this area. The CAC's recommendations represent, I think, the considered opinion of the individuals that you're supposed to be serving, and therefore, I suggest that you take the entirety of the CAC recommendations and incorporate them into the tip. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Rick Hernandez, and he has two donors, Connie Rose and James Shirk.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, you have nine minutes.
Good evening, MPO board. First, I want to thank Connie Rose and Jim Shirk for their time donations. As always, I appreciate your trust. I am chair of the Transportation Committee for Tampa Heights Civic Association. I speak today on my behalf and on behalf of the association. I also serve on the MPO's CAC as vice chair, and I'm a member of the Independent Oversight Committee. My written comments via Facebook are incorporated now by reference. Your MPO CAC has recommended that you, as a board, strike Tampa Bay Next sections 5, 6, 7, and 8 from the tip document. The votes were not close by CAC or any other standards, 7 to 4, 8 to 5, 10 to 4, and 8 to 4, respectively. The line items and page references to help you find these sections, if you're following along in your himnels, are a little difficult to track because they've jumped around a little bit over the course of the last week or two, and certainly since our, our meeting on June the 10th for the CAC. Section 5 is at page 65 of your 280-page PDF document. That's the section between West Shore and downtown. Section 6 is the downtown interchange. That is now line item 33 of Table 2. It was previously 32, as was referenced in our chair's comments, Mr. Roberts. Section 7, which is the area north of the downtown interchange, north through Beers, that's now line item 32 in Table 2. That's former line item 31. And section 8 is the section east of the Selman Connector out to Branch Forbes Road. You'll find that in the FDOT Work Program, page 69 of 280. I'll talk about all of that jumping around later, but for now, among the majority of these votes were representatives appointed by Plant Cities Mayor Rick Lot, Council Joe Citro, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Kemp, Council Maniscalco. The appointees of Commissioners Overman and Smith were not present for the meeting, but given past actions, I suspect that they may have been on the side of the majority. Of course, I don't have any reference for that or their authority to represent. Nonetheless, in the past, this board has given great respect and attention to the recommendations of the CAC. That, of course, is very much appreciated by those devoting hour upon hour to that service. It is my hope that you will again pay attention to the guidance offered by the citizens charged by you with advisory duties. Given the new makeup of this MPO board, the citizens of Hillsborough County have reason to hope, I think, that tonight we will finally secure a board vote reflective of the people's will, clearing the way for a discussion of true multimodal solutions for our transportation crisis. Urban interstates are the 20th century monuments to segregationist policies. In Hillsborough County, they destroyed, relocated, marginalized minority communities and communities of concern. The violence done was not limited to a discrete point in time, nor was it limited to a discrete issue. The violence has continued for generations and has impacted virtually every aspect of life, including access to affordable housing, jobs paying a living wage, clean air, healthcare, quality food. Food deserts are an issue in District 3. Education, and the list goes on. This violence will continue in perpetuity, absent leadership stepping up to say, once and for all, no more. This, ladies and gentlemen, is your opportunity to make history, and in no small measure, establish your legacy. In this moment, our transportation needs and our needs for social and environmental and economic justice come into perfect alignment. COVID-19 has changed our world. Specific to the issues of travel, commuting, and work, it is becoming very clear that a post-COVID world will include a paradigm shift from office-based work to a more remote telecommuting model. Recent traffic counts reported by the Florida Department of Transportation to the MPO staff reflect an average 38% reduction. Even a relatively small reduction of 5% to 10% would make interstate widening arguments moot. The answer, ladies and gentlemen, is not to double down on the mistakes of the past. The answer, ladies and gentlemen, is not to double down on the mistakes of the past. The answer is not to increase the size of a monument to segregationist policies. Please send TBX and TB Next into history's dustbin. Let us focus on robust public transit, transit-oriented development, affordable housing, locally-owned businesses, historic preservation, sustainability, and resilience. If we focus there, we will leave Hillsborough County and Tampa better than we found them. That, in essence, concludes my more formally-prepared comments, but with the time I have left, I want to just take a personal note regarding my concerns over the Department of Transportation's pattern of obfuscating regarding its plans and proposals. For example, two tip items, Sections 5 and Section 8, previously clustered in Table 2 along with everything else that we've been working on for the last several years, going back to 2015. Those two sections somehow magically got ghosted and hidden away this time around. They no longer appear in Table 2, rather they appear in the FDOT Work Program portion of the tip, deep in the middle of a 280-page document. Now, who do you suppose might ferret them out there? I did, but I'm not the typical sort when it comes to these issues. I knew what I was looking for and I wasn't going to stop until I found it, and I found it. We talked about it at some length at the CAC. They weren't particularly happy with the shell game either. This is not open, transparent communication with the public, and it leaves me wondering, what have we missed? Another example, last year, the downtown interchange operational improvements were slipped into the tip at the last minute as the CAC was walking into its meeting to review the tip document as an action item. That was not well-received by the CAC and we recommended that that operational improvement item be stricken then. This year, after our CAC tip review meeting on June 10th, the Department of Transportation or someone managed to slip in line item 16 of Table 2 dealing with the Ashley Street exit. Your CAC has never had an opportunity to see or even ask a single question about that item. I know nothing about it beyond the questionable description in the tip document itself, which simply says "North Downtown Grid Multimodal Improvements." Ladies and gentlemen, this is not transparent public participation. No matter how it is you might define those terms. I thank you. We are, for the sixth time, once again in your hands. Please do the right thing and finally, strike TBX and TB Next from the tip. I cede the balance of my time.
Thank you. Next.
The next three speakers, Gloria Jean Royster, then Hoyt Prindall, and then Shane Ragel.
Hi, Chairman Miller. Gloria Jean Royster is here, but she's suddenly ill and I'd like to know if I could cede my time to someone?
I'm sorry, repeat that, ma'am.
Gloria Jean Royster is here, but I'm suddenly ill and I'd like to know if I could cede my time to someone?
Who would you like to give it to, ma'am?
Michelle Cookson.
Okay, is she next?
Are you asking your staff?
Yes.
She is not next, no.
Okay, ma'am, just go ahead and give it to Michelle Cookson. Staff, remind me when Michelle Cookson come up that she would have six minutes, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Hoyt Prindall is next.
Good afternoon, members of the MPO Board. My name is Hoyt Prindall, 1710 West Ferris Avenue. I'm an attorney that works in downtown Tampa and also serve on the Hillsborough MPO Citizens Advisory Committee. Want to thank you all for your service in these trying times. I'm here to comment tonight to request that the MPO Board strike line items 5, 6, 7, and 8 from the tip regarding the TBX Next project. If we're looking at the future of cities and the future of transportation, it's very clear that the tip as proposed is a document that is well-suited for 1955. Marty McFly and Doc Brown from Back to the Future would be very proud. And the reason for that is that it is focused again on freeway expansion and road building. As you saw from an earlier part of your transportation in the slides on the five-year transportation plan, less than 4% of the current transportation funding is allocated towards transit uses. And that simply does not align with where the country is headed and where this community is headed. As others have touched on, driving is down due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we really need to take the time to evaluate where our transportation systems are going to go in the next five to 10 years. I can tell you that a vote to pass the tip will ultimately result in failure because it is known from every freeway project in an urban area known to man that simply adding capacity in the urban core will not produce desirable outcomes, as various other speakers have said. And that is why so many of us have come forward today to ask that these particular line items be removed from the tip. I want to be clear, though, that that does not include the West Shore Interchange and many of us are not opposed to the West Shore Interchange and understand its benefit to the community. So this is not a blanket statement to say all freeway building is bad, never build more roads, but it is a statement to say that continuing to demolish the most valuable land in the community, which is in the downtown area, to provide for more freeways without a better, say, Boston Big Dig-style plan or other plan that returns land to the residents of the city, is not a good plan. I'll also remind you, as I part, that the MPO was put into place to prevent FDOT from being able to do whatever it wanted regarding transportation projects in the area. It's very easy to simply approve whatever FDOT puts forward, but the purpose of the MPO is really to be a backstop and protect the community. And I think the MPO Board has a chance to do that today by striking items 5, 6, 7, and 8 from the tip. I thank you for your time and your service and yield the balance of my time.
Next.
Shane Ragel, and then Adam Metz.
Please repeat the name.
Shane Ragel.
Yes.
There we go. Shane Ragel, next person, please.
Next person. My name is Shane Ragel. I'm the president of the Tampa Heights Civic Association. I am speaking to you as one of the 16,000 residents in the neighborhood. And I have to say that actually, after hearing some of the speakers who get to represent downtown and West Shore and all the great development that's happening near their areas, we're a little bit jealous. We're talking about "transportation improvements" that are going to be happening in our neck of the woods with some of the items 32, 33, that really add no value to our homes, add no value to our businesses, and we're the ones who get to hold on to the brunt of the construction. One of the things we always kind of want to think about is what decisions are being made for us outside of our home. And you know, I think that one thing that we've learned is sometimes local government, and the more local you can get those government decisions made, the better. Because those are people that are actually on the ground, those are people that are actually seeing what's happening. And I understand, you know, the interstate's there, it was placed there in the 60s and that's the way people get around the county. And that's the way they're getting from North County and they're getting into Pinellas County, and I understand that. But what we're asking is we're asking the people who live next to the interstate to take the brunt of the burden so that people who decided to not be in the area or some who did not, who had the interstate put on top of them, to take a brunt of the burden. Now, I can tell you that the "transportation improvements" that are being listed in 32 and 33 in the table are not going to, if they don't go through, they're not going to make Amazon or Home Depot not put a warehouse out in the county. What will make Amazon or some of these companies come to town is to have a thriving metropolitan area where people are able to move down here because we do have transit, not because we have more roads. Those are some things that you have to consider. It's fairly short-sighted to think that we're going to slap a road in the middle of downtown and all the pollution is just going to float away. I'm coming to you four houses down from that flyover ramp that they're going to put on. And you're going to tell me that that's going to add value to my home, to have double the amount of cars going by, so I have at now 3 o'clock in the morning, two cars that get to go side by side speeding down that road because now we have two on that nice fun flyover. You know, Busch Gardens is closed, but you know what? The I-4 flyover is open. So those are some things I want you to consider. Also, looking at the items 4, 3, 4, 4, 5, 2, and 4, 3, 1, 7, 4, 6, 2, those are putting in toll lanes. You know, it was cute when they first were talking about it, now they have funding for it. A lot of you guys were against the funding of those types of tolls and now it's actually happened. So it's time to do something about it. They did stick it into the paperwork, deep in there, and thank goodness we had some people, some advocates who are looking out for us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Next.
Adam Metz.
Adam Metz. Adam Metz.
Next is Mauricio Rosas.
Mauricio is self-muted. You need to unmute yourself, Mauricio.
Yes, unmuted. I beg your pardon. It took me a second to get this done. All right, first of all, I want to start with that we are Mauricio Rosas. I do work, volunteer with OSHA in the Highways and Byways Committee. I'm focused on the byways area. From that perspective, I want to begin with talking about 14th and 15th Streets. The exit there doesn't make any sense anymore because the mayor is planning to put in a bike boulevard right there. So not only will we have an increase in traffic going into the neighborhood, we're also going to have bicycles right alongside of it. That does not make any sense. I think that's a very, that's a safety hazard. Similarly, we have the same, a similar situation happening on Hillsborough and Florida Avenue, where there's another safety hazard happening, again, because of a similar circumstance. 275 is trying to integrate itself into Hillsborough and then feed its way through the neighborhood, and it's causing problems. We cannot have more safety problems. So before moving forward with 14th and 15th and the bicycle boulevard, I think FDOT needs to talk to the mayor. I think FDOT needs to look at the repercussions that may happen, and that's item number one. I must say that I completely oppose this entire idea that malfunction junction north to Bear's Avenue is a vital link. The vital link has been disproven once and many times over. 60% of the people that travel on that one little space are people who live right here in the neighborhood. That said, 60, and since I have a lot to cover in only a couple of minutes, Commissioner Miller said something very important some years ago. He said, "When he was a young man, he did not have a voice." And so, Cam Long, I-75, they called it 275, they destroyed the scrubs. They destroyed Central Avenue. They destroyed the entire, the entire fabric of the African-American community. And yet, to this day, they still have not recovered. And when I say they have not recovered, I'm talking about, let's talk about East Tampa just a little bit. Because the highway, the way it has been built, completely separated our neighborhoods, people could not thrive with small businesses or even bringing in more industry. So here we have, by West Shore, we have lots of industry, lots of jobs and everything else. East Tampa, what do we have in East Tampa? East of Nebraska Avenue. Same thing with north of 275 in the VM Ebor District. We have a disproportionate amount of people to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Joshua Frank, and then Michelle Cookson with donor.
Chair, if I may, before I begin, I'd like to ask respectfully that staff make all board members visible for these virtual meetings moving forward so we know those of us giving up our free time to speak are not doing so to empty chairs. As public servants, I believe this would be at least a good faith gesture. At least when we're still doing these meetings in person, we can see who leaves the dais.
I'm going to comment on that, sir. Do understand that we're doing the very best we can at uncertain times. And we're doing, sometimes this works, sometimes it doesn't. So we're doing the very best we can. There's no book or, you can't Google a pandemic to tell us what to do. So we're doing our very best, okay?
I appreciate all the effort that you've done, all the staff has done. I just think it's in good faith to have the ability to see who's actually present. I appreciate that.
Okay, you have three minutes.
So good evening, Board. Welcome to those newly-appointed members. A special welcome. For those of you who don't know me by now, I'm Josh Frank. I'm a St. Pete native, urban designer, architect. I'm the, one of the Hillsborough County Representatives on the TBARDA CAC and the leader of the Boulevard Tampa Campaign, one of only 10 interstates nationally to be nominated, vetted, and included in the Congress for New Urbanism's Freeways Futures Report, a nationally-renowned sort of award that the interstate has been given and our work has been given. Being in front of the tip hearing has become something of an old hat for me by now. And I'm certain a lot, a lot of what I have to say has and will be said by others, so I'll keep my comments rather brief. This Board faces several compounding challenges ahead. An unknown future economic landscape, a pandemic, boiling cultural division, all built on top of the now-century-long lack of public transportation and bad growth management. I do not say this lightly. Decisions you make now will impact this community for the next century. I want you all to take away two items if you hear anything I say. One, first and foremost, the only way to reduce congestion is to have less cars. This Board needs to make mode shift in the creation of alternatives, the sole point of scrutiny for every project or study you vote on. Ask yourselves, will this reduce the number of cars on the roads? And let that answer alone cast your judgment. Make no mistake, we are and have been at DEFCON 1 now for 10 years. The time to act was yesterday. The second lesson is that right now, you can make change. The amazing thing about our built, natural, and cultural environments is that they are all dynamic. They can and do change over time, sometimes for the better, sometimes for worse, but always changing. For every era of streetcar removal, you can begin an era of transit renaissance. While we are today a national leader in bike and pedestrian fatalities, you can put us on the path towards becoming the safest region in the country tomorrow. Use your platform and your vote to make a change away from the mistakes of the past. We cannot afford to make them again. Follow the advice of your CAC. Stay safe, be well, and thank you for your time.
Next.
Michelle Cookson. Gloria Royster is donating her time.
Cookson, she has six minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, MPO Board. Michelle Cookson, Tampa, Florida. I am a 24-year resident of historical Seminole Heights and a founding member of Sunshine Citizens, a grassroots movement tasked with and dedicated to mobility options, public safety, and transit implementation. And the comments that I wanted to share with you tonight basically have to do with something that we've been talking about for quite a while now. For six years, the community, in a very large coalition that covered every area of Hillsborough County, has asked the MPO Board to prioritize their project funding to reflect the will of the people. The consistent request has been to stop allowing FDOT to run unbridled over the heart of our city and historic neighborhoods. The pattern of endless highway widening is one of a dark, self-fulfilling prophecy where FDOT policies seek only to increase capacity, induce demand, and then we find we have again arrived at a clogged interstate and heavily-impacted and unsafe local roads as well. Their only answer seems to be to keep us all shackled to automobile dependency at the expense of the very same neighborhoods which have borne a disproportionate at the expense of the very same neighborhoods which have borne a disproportionate burden since this highway was rammed through our minority communities. Make no mistake, this highway embodies and enshrines a shameful legacy of systemic racism. And here we are, still being told to applaud the doubling down on repeating the very same pattern, choices and loop of harm. This year, we see again that there is still this pattern, seeking to add interstate exits at 14th and 15th Streets and Historic Ebor City. And increase the size of the downtown interchange. This impact will be tremendously harmful to the environment, to the fabric of this community, to the health of the human beings who live there. Project segments continue to show toll express lanes, including now wrapping up Ashley Drive exit with toll lanes and holding city priority projects hostage to the same old arm twisting. Hey, you want this Ashley Drive city, uh, project, City of Tampa? Then you're going to have to take the DTI work. We have a process. That process entails your CAC sitting as a citizen voice, volunteering their time to dig into the details on behalf of the community. And they've sent you recommendations that echo what I am saying. Though again, we see that process sidestepped with another last minute addition to the tip that the CAC was not permitted to review. We need other transportation solutions and we need them prioritized ahead of costly highway widening projects. This is especially true in light of all that has shifted with the COVID pandemic, as you've heard many people mention, where we know, we already have seen a substantial reduction in traffic and a shift to increase remote work and a changing way that we are going to move into the future in terms of how we deal with our jobs. TB Next is based on now inaccurate projections. It continues to allocate over a hundred million dollars to expanding the downtown interchange and harming Tampa's urban core. It's too expensive. No one wants this. And everything has changed dramatically. The MPO Board can't make this decision when all of the parameters it was based on have now shifted. Please listen to the wise information that's been shared tonight. Listen to your CAC. It is time to finally take TB Next, every single bit of it, out of the tip. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Bob Rolak and then Ronald Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Uh, I'm Bob Rolak, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Chamber. Uh, on behalf of the, the Tampa Bay Chamber's members and our Board of Directors, I would like to reiterate our support for the Transportation Improvement Plan as proposed. Uh, the, the Chamber is proud to be an organization that not only understands the necessity of growth and the options that are required if we're truly going to grow in the right way, but also that we're very careful in supporting and protecting neighborhoods while we prepare for the future. Uh, the, the Tampa Bay Chamber opposes any efforts to strike, uh, the components of the Transportation Improvement Plan that would dilute and/or hinder the viability of the intended project. Uh, we respectfully ask for your support to make the proposed plan a reality. Mr. Chairman, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Ronald Weaver.
Good evening. My name is Ron Weaver with Tampa Bay Chamber. My address, forty-four oh three West Dale. Mr. Rolak has spoken well for the Tampa Bay Chamber for the need to leave in sections five, six, seven, and eight to leave in the integral integration of our interstates. And especially safety, there are over a thousand crashes a year in the downtown interchange. Studies have shown that by two oh four five, that interchange is going to be two hundred and forty percent of capacity. Not a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred, but two hundred and forty percent of capacity. And therefore, the Greater Tampa Bay Chamber has asked that we please leave in the items five, six, seven, and eight of TB Next. And for purposes of this evening's discussion, the reasons are that number one, one of those is the crucial connection of the areas around Heinz and Lois to the Hillsborough River and the Ashley Exit. Secondly, they involve items to facilitate I four east of downtown and east of Ebor City, if you look at those four items. And if you look further, you'll notice that they indeed deal with issues of the Interstate two seventy-five North to try to prevent those thousands, as many of those thousand crashes as possible in the downtown interchange. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next.
Dana Lazarus and she has a donor, Sam Becker.
Hello.
Hello, you have six minutes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. I did not know I'd have that much time. Thank you, Sam. You're the best. Um, hi, everybody. Uh, so my name is Dana Lazarus. I'm a Master of Urban and Regional Planning graduate. I graduated last September. I have graduate certificates in community development and sustainable transportation. Um, I'm co-founder along with Sam Becker of the USF Student Group, Student Advocates for Progressive Planning. And I'm a co-founding admin of the Discussion Group Transit, now Tampa Bay. Most recently, I'm a homeowner in the College Hills neighborhood of East Tampa, where I am friends with all of my lovely, lovely neighbors. I love them. So, um, I feel that I, I speak for, um, quite a few people, um, and perspectives. Um, real quick, I just want to say some of the things that I support in the, uh, in the tip as written. I support line item forty-eight, the HART CSX Study. Um, right now it's just a proposed priority, but uh, I believe it should definitely be an actual priority. Um. I support the T-BART van pool. I, um, actually, I worked at the Center for Urban Transportation Research, uh, Cutter, over at USF and, uh, worked on the Transportation Demand Management Plan. And one of the greatest programs that we do have here in Hillsborough County is this T-BART of van pool. And it's just, it's such an undervalued program and it could be doing so much good to get people in the suburbs. Um, further out to their places of employment in the city. Um. So consider that. Uh, let's see what else. I noticed that there's a Greenspine project on 15th Street from 13th Avenue to 21st Avenue. I applaud that. I'm glad that that's there. Um. And now I would like to say it would be great if we would remove one of the top unfunded priorities, the downtown interchange. Um, it's right by the house that I just purchased and I drive by that area every day. And I've already spoke out on this at the, uh, public hearing that FDOT had on this project. So hopefully my, um, perspective has been noted, but um, I don't believe that we need any reconfiguration of that interchange based on the multiple times a day that I go on and off of that interchange. Um, I believe that our priorities have to be things that actually take cars off the road, the transportation demand management, things that we have at our fingertips to, um, move cars around, um, and move people around. Um, I'm also interested in the McKay Bay Trail Extension, um, and connecting some more of these bike trails around this part of the city. Um. Finally, I want to speak about my neighborhood. Um, so I'm over on the intersection of 26th Street and 26th Avenue, right by the Italian Union graveyard and, um, actually right behind Belmont Heights. Um, so all around here, there are dirt curbs and unsafe infrastructure. Um, and we have no speed bumps, um, tons of potholes and absolutely no bicycle infrastructure. And I'm talking about inside the actual neighborhood, not just on 22nd. Um. But also on 22nd, there are gaps where there needs to be some bicycle infrastructure because my goodness, there are so many bicyclists going all around this area. I see them every single day, just one, two, three, four. I mean, I can count them. Um, and one day, actually, only two months after I moved into my house, um, a veteran, an elderly black man was hit by a car on his bike. He flew off of his bike and hit his head and it was bleeding and we had to call the hospital. Um, so Tampa is where there's a lot, there's a density of people. And so Tampa, we need a lot of investment here for the vision that we have for transportation. So now for the big picture stuff. So first of all, as a board, you're required by the FAST Act to prioritize multimodal projects. Um, locally, we're doing pretty good, but FDOT is still prioritizing road widening by a wide margin. The community groups that I represent believe it takes, that this tip as written takes an unbalanced approach to designing a cohesive and effective transportation system. We do need to start planning for the future. Uh, we, uh, it's true, uh, that we are expecting 700,000 new people in Hillsborough County. That's great data. And our, the way we plan transportation should be data-driven. Um, however, like what some people before me have said, that in order to accommodate for these people, we have to build more roads and widen our highways and, and I mean, hello, like induced demand is, is, there's data behind induced demand. We need our transportation to be more data-driven. We also need to follow the federal law that we need to have more multimodal transportation. Um. Uh, another thing for the future that we need to consider is the fact that there are so many fewer cars on the road because of COVID nineteen. And that trend is more than likely going to continue, um, that people are going to be working remotely. Um, and so that's, again, that's a transportation demand management thing that we need to, we need to allow people to work from home. We need to have programs that help people work from home and get cars off the road before we go building these multi-billion dollar projects to create more roads. Um.
Thank you, ma'am. My time is up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Christopher Gleason and then Barbara Topeke.
Yes, how you doing? Um. This year's five-year Transportation Improvement Program has a lot of good points or a lot of good projects in it, but there are some exceptions. The future looks uncertain on many fronts when it comes to traffic forecasts with COVID nineteen. And the future demands on our urban interstate as that looks to be changing in front of our eyes. Multiple projects in the tip this year show the need for other options away from personal car ownership and single op- occupancy vehicles. Those include clean electric bus transit, rail, safer walk bike with added dedicated corridors and improved safety on existing roadways. Some of the good projects in the tip this year is the post-CXX, uh, HART Study. So rail studies is a great thing moving forward. Another one is Tampa, City of Tampa's Street Car Extension Study, uh, extending it up to Tampa Heights, which is a very vastly growing area that needs that service. Uh, the Heights Mobility Study is also very important for that area as it's very dangerous to walk or bike in those, uh, streets along some of Heights and Tampa Heights and that area. All of the complete street projects are great that I saw. All the trails and Greenway projects are great that I saw. All the Vision Zero projects I saw were great. The problem is most of those are way off. Um, they're either three, four, five, six years away. Uh, those projects, value-wise, money-wise, is very cheap. The benefit is very great. Most of these road projects, as you know, are very, very highly expensive. And so the same value for, for widening a mile of road, you can get a great larger benefit for when it comes to, uh, especially complete street projects because not only does it help people walking and biking, it also helps people driving. Uh, a lot of people that I know drive and they're scared of hitting people. And so they have to drive very cautiously. They don't want to drive at night. It's also very, uh, it's very, um, mostly damaging to people. They're always continuously afraid of hitting people. It's not a good way to drive. You drive scared and you drive defensively when you should not have to. Another one that I saw is HART's, um, twenty-five million that they're requesting for electric buses and infrastructure. I think that's great moving forward, uh, especially when buses coming through urban core. Those electric buses do a great thing. Uh, one thing I saw HART did that I am not for is five million. Um, that's, that they're requesting for automated vehicles. I don't see why a transit agency should be involving themselves, uh, in automated vehicles as it's not, um, transit. And I don't know what they'd be doing with that five million dollars outside of storing them, storage. I mean, I don't know what else you can do with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
Barbara Topeke. Next is Laura Yerina. Chris Bella. Catherine Hartley.
Hello.
Yes, who's this?
Good evening, Catherine Hartley. I'm the Principal of Hartley Planning Collaborative. I specialize in integrating land use and transportation. I have an undergraduate and graduate degree in urban planning. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. And then I'm accredited by the Congress of the New Urbanism. I'm just, uh, calling in tonight to second the CAC's recommendation to remove the items related to TB Next from the TIP. I can tell you after working, um, even for Development Services for Hillsborough County for a number of years, that you do not have a traffic problem, you have a design problem. The system is actually designed to fail. Over a hundred studies have been conducted over the last 50 years that say you can't pave your way out of congestion. Typically, any gains you have in the short term by adding capacity are lost within a few years, thanks to induced demand. But what I mean by a failure for Hillsborough County in particular is that you have thousands of homes that have been built or are entitled, um, in your planned developments that have limited connections to the system. The grid has not only been disrupted in Tampa, but it was also not replicated out into the county very well. So thousands of units on private streets dump traffic onto the interstate or one or two arterials. When one of those facilities fail, like when there is a crash, cars are diverted to a parallel facility. And then its level of service fails. People get mad, they call their commissioner and tell you that the road needs to be widened. At a price tag of what's probably about a billion dollars plus, I think you'd be better served by amending your land development codes to require new developments to contribute to a grid. Stop vacating streets, start putting transportation money to more connections and stop allowing private streets where only a limited number of people can use that roadway. Further, I can tell you that an earlier speaker, Dud, who I don't know, but he's correct. Um, when he said that the data manipulation is, uh, it's, it's actually very real. When I worked for the county between 2013 and 2016, I was working on the Little Manatee South Implementation Project where the Mormon Church funded a study to look at expanding the urban service area in South County so that they could convert their ag land to residential. Thousands of trips were added to the long-range transportation plan model in anticipation of the future land use map change and urban service area expansion. However, those comp plan amendments never came to fruition. The problem was that those trips not removed from the model and the long-range transportation plan update was not, was adopted with those trips plugged in. So I can tell you that cows don't drive and the road should not be widened to accommodate them. Um, I do think that you should add the boulevard option for two seventy-five into the work program in the TIP. I don't know why they weren't, why it wasn't, but I recommend that you do. Thank you. Um, thank you for your service and have a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Michelle Johnson.
Next. Please mute your microphone. Who's the next speaker?
Jason Ball. Is that Jason Ball?
No, next speaker. Jason's not there.
Okay, James DiMaro.
Hello, I'm Jim DiMaro. I live on one one oh eight North Franklin.
Hello, I'm Jim DiMaro. I live on 1108 North Franklin Street, Tampa. I've been a resident of Tampa since 1990. And a few years after I moved here, there was a plan to widen the interstate to its current configuration. However, at that point, the discussion was around mass transit being down the center lanes. And would have gone up 275 across to I-4, over to Howard Franklin and into downtown. I've been waiting 20 years for that to occur. Mass transit is the only way to get cars off the roads. Building wider roads is not going to do it. And I really object to the road system that allows another lane of concrete to be added to our already overburdened neighborhoods. That those lanes are going to be toll lanes, which provides the exact opposite effect of mass transit. In other words, the toll lanes allow people who have enough money to use the roads whenever they'd like, regardless of the cost in their individual cars to populate that lane at the expense of everyone else. Mass transit allows many people an affordable way to get into the downtown area without having to pay exorbitant parking prices. So whatever, uh, is in the TIP, if it excludes the, the toll lanes and the additional Lexus lanes, forgive me, um, I would appreciate that to, to be the consideration. Thank you for, uh, your, uh, giving me an opportunity to speak today.
Lena Young Green and then Brenton Wernick.
Lena Young, you're self-muted.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Yes, Miss Green, you, you, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, this is Lena Young Green. We want to thank you for another opportunity, yet another year to share our perspective on the TIP and the different, uh, uh, items that are involved, included in the TIP. Once again, this year we see that TBX is buried somewhere inside of the TIP. Once again, we're here asking the same thing that we've been asking for the last five years, that that part of these proposals be removed. Section five, six, seven, and eight, that has been recommended by the CAC. We ask that those be removed from this TIP. You, you are the ones that identify residents who are serving on the CAC. They are the ones that live close to us and they're the ones that we go to, to ask for, to take our message to you, the MPO. So please, please follow what they are recommended in, recommending in those areas. Today we are seeing a massive change, a phenomena that is now tearing down statues that have been erected for hundreds of years, some of them that honor racism and, and bad treatment to people who are of color. The interstate, I-275, I-4 represent that same mindset. I personally know people, knew families, know close families who could tell me about what the impact of putting these interstates in place did to our community. Today we are still suffering from this same interstate that was rammed through our neighborhood. Today we are suffering the emotional impact. Today we are suffering the social impact. Today we are suffering the environmental impact. Today we are suffering the health impact. We are suffering, suffering the division of our neighborhoods. You can't fixed past, the past behavior by continuing to do the same thing. Please consider removing those sections so that our neighborhoods could thrive as much as the folks who talk about the downtown and those other areas. Because people matter, minority people matter, and our lives matter exactly as other people. Thank you.
Brenton Wernick.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Brenton Wernick. I live at 123 West Hollywood Street in the Seminole Heights neighborhood. I'm a professor at the University of South Florida. My main commuting, uh, commuting transportation mode is by bicycle. I bike between downtown and USF, um, almost daily. Um, the available infrastructure for non-car transportation in Tampa is abysmal. And the repeated, um, willingness of my local government authorities to allow FDOTs to prioritize to almost without exception, um, car-based transportation projects is unacceptable. The, the current tip proposal, um, does not provide adequate provisions for, um, long-term planning of regional transit options or other non-car options. The, the proposed expansions and widening of the interstate through my neighborhood don't provide any sort of earmarking or designation that any widening is going to be specifically and exclusively used by things like, um, Bus Rapid Transit. And so the outcome of that is not going to be expanded transportation options, it's going to be more cars on the interstate. In the past couple of months, due to the COVID-19 crisis, we've seen a huge change in the, um, air pollution in my neighborhood. As the amount of daily traffic plummeted, um, due to the unfortunate economic consequences of COVID-19, I experienced a noticeable improvement in my ability to breathe, um, and be outside in my neighborhood. And to, uh, ignore the severe health and economic consequences of the, of the air pollution caused by the interstate and to invite there to be more cars and increase the amount of, um, traffic that is going through there on a daily basis is just not acceptable. Uh, we aren't going to solve the, the, any safety or capacity problems by making that road wider. Uh, we need to restructure the interstate system through our, um, through our city in order to, um, reduce the amount of, um, traffic that is impacting, um, at places like the dysfunction junction. We aren't going to be able to solve that by making that interchange wider. We need to redirect traffic. Or sustainable and long, um, approach. I see my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, those are all the registered speakers, but I received a note I have five speakers on the phone. The first one is Rishima McCoy.
Move to the next one.
Joseph Duffy.
How you doing, sir?
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir. Sir, as a member and a resident of the West Shore Palms community here in, in South Tampa, uh, we're strongly against, I, I went around to the neighborhood numerous times, talking to a lot of individuals. And there's a lot of traffic and road expansion going on close to our, our neighborhood currently. Uh, it's actually pretty sad if you actually drive through the neighborhood now that our roads six months ago were really great roads. But due to the construction of the interstate, they have totally destroyed a lot of the roads, which I have already followed a couple of things with the city and no one has done anything. So as they build other roads, they destroy city roads. So somebody in the board needs to one, look at that, number one. Number two, a, as a member of the West Shore Palms community, um, you know, as we went around the neighborhood, there's a lot of talk and the, the discussion and reference e- expanding West Shore Exchange and the 275, the Tras Street. Uh, but we really, we as the community here, as the neighborhood, we don't look forward to growth of, uh, uh, the, the, the fact that we don't want more cars in our neighborhood. We have to come up with new ideas. The same ideas over and over and over, year after year, something has to change. All right, there's a lot of new communities in, on the west shore, uh, that were created, but the infrastructure didn't go in there to support it. So it's not me, I should be, or, or my community should lose part of their, their, uh, their neighborhood to support that. We've got to look at other different ways. And due to COVID-19, I know as I go through the community here, um, just, I'd say over 30 houses. 15 to 20 people are now working from home and, and, and the way it looks is they'll, they'll be potentially working that, uh, uh, in the near future that way. And so I think the board has to go back and look and do restudies on a lot of these projects. Um, that, you know, that has, you know, the studies, the numbers, but it, it doesn't support it when you go out to the roads right now and you support the amount of people that are, uh, working from home. So I, I would ask that you look at that. I would ask the members to take time. We're investing a lot of money, but as you know, in the future, we're going to be paying for COVID costs for many years ahead. So that money's going to come from somewhere. So we have to, one, look at not only the growth and the change of how people are working, but we need to look at how are we going to pay for the current growth and that's going to come out of somewhere. So we have to look at that. Um, so, uh, so any, any, any West Shore Exchange, um, I, I'd be glad to provide anybody the information or send them pictures or, or even video of what we have on the streets today of where the road has been currently, our neighborhood's been destroyed um, by the current construction of the interstate. And the amount of where our neighborhood looks like a highway already from the streets cutting through. We definitely don't want to see any growth, any more.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
On the phone, we have Kim Maloney and Cynthia Maloney. Okay, and then I have a last name of Wolf on the phone.
Does anyone on the phone need to enter their audio PIN?
Okay.
All right, um, Michelle Johnson is asking if she could speak. Her audio is fixed now.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Sorry about that. We had two technologies running before. I appreciate your time. Uh, Beach Park resident, we have about 1,200 residents in Beach Park. My husband and I are representing ourselves. Thank you all for your time today. The reason for our call is we do support the other speakers' comments about the preservation of neighborhoods, South Tampa, Seminole Heights, and everywhere in between. We also support the establishment of safe and ADA compliant sidewalks, crosswalks. We like safe bike lanes and we want clean air. Um, we moved to Tampa from Wisconsin, Chicago, um, as a life dream. Thought it was going to be a walkable city in Beach Park, um, over across to West Shore. Kennedy is so dangerous, I can't go for ice, a card medicine. Publix is beautiful, it's too dangerous to cross Southwest Shore. So our plea is that there is enforcement and safety concerns being taken place. We, we, we bring in the enforcement because we say, whatever improvements are going to happen now, what about if we take care of our existing? We're looking for safety improvements being installed at Kennedy and Southwest Shore for resident safety. In the name of pedestrian, bike, vehicle speed enforcement is critical and improperly traveling commercial traffic. We're also asking automated ticketing be installed at Kennedy and Southwest Shore Boulevard to ticket any illegal trucks that enter south at the 100 block of Southwest Shore and any illegal trucks that exit north at the 100 block of Southwest Shore. So we know that there are improvement projects going on. Um, there's various sta- stages of funding and we thank you for your PowerPoint that was nicely outlined. Um, so we really just want to be in the neighborhood that we thought we were being brought in. Our concern with the additional traffic at, uh, State Road 60, as well as any west shores, and it will bring more illegal traffic into our neighborhood. So we're just really asking for care and concern of the existing roadways. We don't see them being policed enough. The police have been amazing, but their matter of concern is they don't have enough to go around. So they're splitting their time from all the way up by Kennedy and West Shore, all the way to Gandy, Davis Island. They only have seven people assigned on traffic enforcement. They can't get to one side to the other, short of seven minutes. So there really is delayed enforcement and at that point it's just taking reports. So we thank you for your time. We ask for your support of ADA safe sidewalks. I have a sidewalk in front of my house on the way to Starbucks that literally is 12 inches wide. They, they put a sidewalk all the way up to tree and then there's 60, 70 mile an hour speeding north traffic going in a residential zone at your shoulder. So nobody could bike, nobody can walk. Uh, and so our concern and why this relates in is it relates to the expansion. Let's take care of the problems we have and manage that and then look at some of those resources also solving those problems. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Maloney, Kim, and Cynthia on the line.
Okay. I don't think they're there.
Okay, Alexandra Wolf.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry. Uh, my name's Alex Wolf. I live in the West Shore District as well, with West Shore Exchange, uh, exchange. I'm against expanding the highway into my neighborhood. Um, any expansion along the Cardinal Street area makes sense. They already built a wall.
Ma'am, you're breaking up. You're still breaking up, ma'am.
How about now? Is this better?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead now.
Yes, as I was saying, I live in the West Shore area. I'm against the expansion of the highway. I think there's a few issues there. It seems like they've already built walls and all this stuff and it seems it makes no sense to knock it down just to turn around and expand it towards our neighborhood. And there's also talk about, uh, opening up the Tras Street entrance, basically creating a highway right through our neighborhood. I think if you do that, you're looking at some fatalities. This is a walking neighborhood. And to then have an entrance into a highway right through a residential neighborhood makes absolutely no sense. Um, there will be fatalities. There's lots of kids, there's people walking their dogs. Um, and it's just going to set up the city for not only ruining a nice residential neighborhood, but also set them up for reliability there. Um, you also have some neighborhoods along the Tras entrance that cannot exit their neighborhood without going into Tras. So talk of making that an entrance into a highway again is ruining an already expensive neighborhood that we've all paid to live in. Um, and same thing with expanding the highway towards another residential ma- neighborhood makes no sense. And, um, so I'm completely against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any raised hands. I believe that's all the speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close that public comment and move into summary of comments submitted in advance. Ms. West. Ms. West. Ms. West, are you there? Staff, does anyone see Ms. West?
She's there. There she is.
Sorry about that. My computer just decided to restart, so I guess they had to give me permission to speak again. All right, um, email comments submitted in, in an event. Sam Owens, how can the public submit concerns and requests when it comes to long overdue transportation projects and wanted to know when the Supreme Court will issue a ruling on the tax, on the sales tax funds? Gary Record, SEI, as Tampa interstate study. Frank Diaz, wanted to know how the public hearing will impact his taxes and wanted to know if his address is a factor. Susan LeBeau, objects to FDOT's planned extensions, changes to North Tras Street. Central interstate expansion will do great harm to greater Seminole Heights and should not be implemented. Mike, Mike Barulik requested FDOT conduct traffic studies. Counts projecting assuming a percentage shift from office to work telecommuting and suggested current data to make sound decisions. Walter Slupke, removed Tampa Bay next from the tip. John, John Chek, requested the noise from the highway running alongside Tampa Heights be abated. George Niemann expressed concerns regarding overwhelming participation by special interest groups that have a financial interest in decisions that are made. He would like to see more participants representing the community. He crossed concerns regarding express toll lanes on 275 Howard Franklin listed as West Shore area interchange. Robert Sawalish on Operation Traffic Signal on Tampa Bay's, on Tampa's Bruce Speed Town Boulevard at the intersection of the University. at the intersection of the University of South Florida, Schumberg Health Sciences Library, James A. Haley Veterans Hospital and IQ Luxury Stadium Apartments. Cameron McNabb, public transit to downtown, to and from the airport, bike and pedestrian safety and more consistent sidewalks. Mauricio Rosas, mass transit in East Tampa Warehouse District, where is the transit infrastructure? Emily Boucher, safer roads for pedestrians crossing Bay Shore Boulevard. Voicemail message received from Robert Kaiser requesting signal protected crosswalk at Florida Avenue and Idyllwild. Letters of support were received from Tampa Downtown Partnership, Tampa Bay Chamber, West Shore Alliance and Tampa Bay Partnership supporting the tip. Letter from the Tampa Bay Partnership commending the board for including both the Regional Rapid Transit Project and the CSX Corridor as regional priorities. Facebook comments and additional emails from Rick Fernandez, Nicole Perry, Sasha Ledney, Matthew Perry, Cindy Horton, Michelle Cricks, Greg Gall, Helen Travis, Susan Long, and Carl Peterson suggesting the board follow the recommendations of the CAC on the tip. In addition, strike section six of the TB Nets Downtown Interchange and strike section seven of TB Nets north of MLK to north of Hillsborough. That concludes the advanced comments.
Thank you. We're now moving to board discussion. Remember, no dissertations, please. Anyone want to be recognized to discuss anything? Anyone want to be recognized? For the third and last. Yes, Mayor Lot, you recognize.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, are you whooping it up this up here so we can make a motion? Or are you still looping for discussion?
Well, just, uh, motion, discussion, whatever the case may be, sir.
Okay. Um, first of all, to the individuals, um, or the gentleman that asked about the, uh, the video. Um, earlier I tried several times to get on the video and every time I did, it kicked me off. And I don't know if I have enough bandwidth here. This is the first time I've done one of these Zoom type meetings at my home and typically at City Hall or at my office. So, uh, I did get it working with my audio. So I'm, I'm, I would put the video on. As you know, I'm not shy putting the video on. We do the EPG meetings. But, um, I'm afraid that if I do it right now, I'll get kicked off. Then I won't be able to, you know, have the opportunity to be able to have discussion or vote on this particular item. Um, every year this is a tough, um, meeting because, um, you know, there's, uh, you, you, you have the works of FDOT. You have the works of, of the, of our, um, our own staff at the MPO, our board. Uh, you have, um, you know, our, you know, the citizens that speak out and, uh, and send it professionally like they always did and they did tonight. So it comes down is, is that, uh, you know, how, how do you continue to move forward, move our, uh, our county forward? And, uh, one thing I love about our MPO is that it was well representation that, uh, you know, we have members from all across our county that gets to weigh in on this. And, uh, and so we, we don't try to do something that's just good for our backyard. We try to do something that's good for, uh, the county as a whole. And, uh, and so, uh, I know we've worked very, very hard, uh, the last several years trying to get all these projects worked out to where, uh, it, um, has the biggest amount of benefit to the community with the least amount of pain. And, uh, and obviously I think we'd all love to be able to have it to where, you know, it has a hundred percent of benefit with, 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 with zero pain where you get a hundred percent buy-in from the entire community. Uh, but that's, that's pretty hard to do. I do, uh, believe that, uh, our, our staff this year worked very strongly with the community, worked very strongly with our board, worked very strongly at FDOT. And I, I believe that the FDOT we're working with today is a lot different than when we worked in the past and they're open for discussion, change and innovation. And, uh, so, uh, and, and, and seeing the, the final product we have here tonight from where it began and where it evolved to where we are this evening, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the tip amended as presented by staff. Thank you.
Is there a second? Pardon me?
Second by the panel.
Motion by Mayor Lot, second by, uh, Mr. Panel. Uh, as if discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Kip, you recognize.
Okay. Um, I guess the first, um, discussion that I like to go is, uh, I have several lines from the tip that I like to remove. Um, and the first one would be line 32.
Right now, Commissioner Kip, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. You're going to make an amendment to the motion or what?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make an amendment.
Um. Exactly. To remove line 32, um, to widen, um, but it is, uh, to widen I-275 north to Bears. So, um, it is to put 24 feet of more pavement, um, from MLK to Bears. Um, we've heard about this a lot. This is two 12-foot additional lanes. There's already two 12-foot additional lanes that are in there that are right in the center that have been unactivated for about five years. We have, um, already 24 feet of lanes that will someday be activated, but have not yet. Um, I, as was mentioned by several speakers, 60% of this is used by people that live within those five or six exits from, uh, Fowler, um, to downtown and they use it to go in between that. Um, they are, for the most part, as we've heard over and over and over again, adamantly opposed to adding these 24 feet of pavement across this, uh, place that will bring us great air pollution, great impacts on the community and neighborhood. Uh, it is, um, you know, at this time unwarranted. But what I can't imagine is we're talking about shrinking. I'm glad that we're closer to shrinking the footprint of the DTI, the Downtown Interchange, and I'd like to talk about that at a later point. But with regards to this, what I don't understand is we've already got two lanes that are headed out or in to the Downtown Interchange, as I said, that are unactivated at this time. You can see them every day when you drive that. Now we're talking about two more lanes. When you start, first of all, forcing all this additional traffic, it puts all the additional traffic on the already, uh, difficult arterials as such as in Hillsborough Avenue. But it also piles it all onto the interchange, which we've said is dangerous and that we're trying to fix, um, now. But instead we're just directing two more full lanes of traffic in each direction into that interchange that is already by all accounts, um, functioning poorly, is incredibly unsafe. And so I cannot believe that we continue on this tract. And, uh, so I'm, I'm presenting that to, to take that out of the tip.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Maniscalco.
Amendment to the motion by Commissioner Kip, second by, uh, Councilman Maniscalco. Uh, is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Any discussion on the amendment to the motion?
Chairman, this is Joe Lepano.
Yes, I'm a part of that amendment. Uh, I don't know whether I have to vote now, but I'd like to vote on the original proposal by Mayor Lot. Okay, what we'll do, Mr. Lepano, we'll vote on the amendment first. And then whether the amendment passes or not, we'll get back to Mr. To the, uh, motion by Mayor Lot that was seconded by you. So we're, we're on the amendment right now. Uh, and, Mr. Kip, you did a lot of talking there. Would you tell us briefly what your amendment says briefly, please?
To remove line 32, um, from the tip. That is the line that, um, does widen, widens between MLK, um, uh, 275 between MLK and Bears. Is that correct, Beth?
I was muted. Yes, that's right.
Adding 24 feet of two lanes in each, one lane in each direction, 24 additional feet.
Okay, let me ask a question. Uh, is there someone on here? Or maybe, maybe, I don't know, Ms. Alden, maybe you can answer this question. What, what Commissioner, uh, Kip is talking about, are they talking about widening it on the outside lanes? Are they talking about widening it by taking some space on the inside? Can anyone answer that question?
Sir, you do have. From.
Mr. Miller, is it? Okay.
Pardon?
Mr. Miller, this is David Guan from FDOT. I can answer the question if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, so segment seven, which is the portion north of I-4 up to Beers. For the portion that goes between I-4 up to about SLY, there is no widening to the outside of the roadway and six feet at most. Once you get north of SLY, there are portions where we widen to the outside, but most of the pavement is already there. There is not an additional 24 feet of pavement anywhere. There are some operational improvements in some of the interchanges at the bottleneck like you have at Hillsborough Avenue. But there is not. Again, everything in the right of way. Uh, one thing I would like to point out in regards to segment seven, as part of Tampa Bay Nets, we did, um, commit to, and I think we did a good job of working with the community in Seminole Heights and Tampa Heights, who told us that they wanted other options besides just interstate widening. And that's what generated the, um, the, the Heights Mobility Study, of which you'll see nearly $50 million worth of funds in this current tip to address their concerns. And those concerns also require us to do some things to vehicular capacity on the north-south arterials like Florida, Tampa, and others to provide wider sidewalks, to provide for bus rapid transit in its own right of way. As part of the factors to mitigate that loss of capacity on the arterials, to allow for wider sidewalks, bus rapid transit, parallel facility bike, um, lanes on roads parallel to the major roads, we're using the additional capacity on the interstate to go ahead and mitigate some of that. And combined with the Downtown Interchange, where we'll provide basically a hundred percent increase in the capacity for the ramp to go from southbound I-275 to I-4, that combined with that additional lane will make it so that the interchange will operate better. So there is no 24 feet of additional pavement anywhere, um, anywhere that's south of SLY is at most six feet. Almost all of it in the median of the roadway and almost all of it already there. So I just wanted to clarify that, uh, for your information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I, um, also had questions regarding that item. Um, I do believe that it is important to kind of improve the area between MLK, Hillsborough and MLK up to SLY to increase safety. But I don't know why it has to go all the way up to Beers. I didn't understand that. Don't understand it. Don't agree to it. Um, so it, it does appear to be an all or none situation here, um, which I'm not really happy about. But I do know that, um, there does need to be at least some improvements, uh, from MLK to the interchange. Um, and that, that would be, or at least MLK, in order to address the approach to the interchange. Um, so I, I, and I've yet to get an answer about that. I, I, I still am very challenged by the offer of things that we've been promised before, like noise walls. Uh, I relish the day that I hear, you know, um, tire drivers fixing the road that isn't supposed to be widened. So I, I do have some concerns about this particular item and I'll support removing it at this point because I don't think that it's finished. Doesn't mean that I wouldn't consider doing it in the future, but I, I won't do it at the moment. Thank you.
Constable Dinkfield, do you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and thanks to, uh, to all the public who, who, uh, participated this evening. Um, just a couple of questions, uh, specifically on the motion. And I wanted to, um, direct this to the secretary. Um, there have been concerns that if we increase traffic or increase the opportunity for more traffic, uh, through that area, uh, that, uh, that we're going to increase air pollution. Um, do our, do the EIS, uh, uh, or other studies, uh, speak to the air pollution and if so, how? And that's you, either you or the secretary.
Constable Dinkfield, hold on. We're, we're on the amendment. You're asking about the motion.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm asking about the, about the Commissioner Kemp's amendments.
Okay, all right. Mr. Secretary?
Yes, sir. Um, so we did do noise, uh, and, and air quality modeling. I, I would mention, I forgot to add that noise walls would be added along the whole stretch of 275 as part of that construction, uh, even in the places where we're not getting any closer to the homes. But, um, on the air quality, and we've had people question the, the air quality model. Um, I'm not an air quality model expert, but what I can tell you is that, that, that model tells us that there would not be a decrease in air quality. Um, that's all I can really tell you. The modeling that's approved by the federal government that we are required to use for doing these types of studies show that there would not be an increase in or decrease in air quality as a result of this particular project.
Okay. And one or two other questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, how about the, um, the COVID issue has come up several times this evening, Mr. Secretary. Um, and some people question, uh, whether or not we'll have less commuters. Um, you know, obviously that's a relatively recent phenomenon, uh, you know, only three months old. Um, but some people have, have expressed that perhaps we should slow down a little bit uh, because we don't know what the future is going to be in regard to, uh, to those traffic issues. Uh, what are you doing about modeling, uh, the COVID impacts?
Yes, what, what I can tell you is, uh, we've got several things that we're doing right now regards to the COVID. Obviously, and I guess fortunately, we've never had one of these before that we could use as a base case to, to compare off of. But we are currently collecting a lot of information on traffic data, but more than that, we're also working with our central office to do statewide, uh, data collection regarding travel behavior. How will this affect travel behavior in the future? Um, and, uh, we don't obviously have the results of that yet because it's going to be a while before we, we know what may, may occur after employers start to look at the, the work conditions and so forth. But in the background, we still have to remember that when you look at the, the projections for population growth in the Tampa Bay region, even if you said we're, we're going to get maybe a third of the traffic, a, a third of the population growth that's projected, we still would be way over capacity and way more traffic than we have today. So there's so many variables out there. A lot of people are saying more people are going to move down here because they want to get away from some of the, the larger cities and move down here. It's going to be a while before we know exactly what kind of impacts that will have. But we are collecting data, both, uh, survey data from individuals to talk about behaviors and hard data on traffic to determine what we may be able to, to derive from that as we move forward.
So this time next year, we'll have a lot more information. If the numbers continue to decrease on the highways, uh, what would you expect? Might our, our response be in regard to, you know, down the road and future tips?
Yeah, I guess, and I think it's going to be probably more than a year before we determine what the long-term impacts might be. But obviously if travel behavior patterns change, that data is, you know, you try to reflect that into your models. And if we see in the future that socioeconomic data changes such that, you know, work to, to home trips change and those patterns change, it should show up in our models. And at that time, you know, we might be able to tell if there's some difference in how that will all work. You know, there's a lot of variables. You know, there's people that wonder will transit come back post-COVID? Will people feel comfortable in transit? Will people feel comfortable going in a large workplace? There's just a lot of variables that we don't know yet. So we'd be guessing at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have a question on the main motion, but I'll hold that for now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, sir. Oh, I think he froze on us, Commissioner.
Yes, the chair is frozen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know what happened there. Mr. Secretary, let me ask you a question. Commissioner Overman asked a question about Hillsborough Avenue. Can you answer that?
About the, the project up to Hillsborough Avenue?
Yes.
On 275?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's actually, there's. Okay, so there's actually, there's actually two projects here. There's one that's in the actual tip, and there's one that's a tip priority that has no funding associated at this point, but that we would try to go after funding in the future. The funding that we have now that will begin construction probably in maybe a little less than a year, that is going to take the fourth lane in each direction up past the Hillsborough Avenue interchange. And the main purpose of that is to try to get the, a lot of times now, people complain, I can't get in the right lane to get to I-4 until I'm too far south, and then I can't merge over. This would take that lane, instead of being able to enter and get south of MLK, it would let you get into that lane up by Sly or Hillsborough. And on the opposite direction, if you're going northbound on 275 coming from I-4, today you have to either move over in a lane real quick, or you have to exit at MLK. The lane ends at MLK. This would take that lane all the way up past Hillsborough so that you have much longer path to be able to make that merge, and really get rid of some of those choke points as much as possible in there. The part, that's the main part of the project is in the tip. The tip priority project is the one that takes it up to Beers and would terminate those four lanes at Beers. They also have noise walls in both of those.
And that is, yes, sir. It does answer my question. And that is item number 32, correct?
Yes, that's right.
That's just my question. Thank you.
Ms. Alden, do you recognize?
I was going to bring up the item that you asked the secretary to speak to, just for clarification, what's funded and what was not funded. So thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the amendment to the motion, amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Constable Maniscalco? Is there any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on the amendment to the motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Klug?
No.
Amendment? We're going to just approve that motion.
Someone has your mic open, please. Mut your mic.
I apologize. Klug, that was a no vote?
No. No vote.
Okay. Citra?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
No.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Harden?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lepano?
No.
Lot?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Marino?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
That was a no vote from Stewart?
That was a no vote from Stewart.
Thank you. Wagner?
No.
Motion failed, seven to eight, with Klug, Dingfelder, Lepano, Lot, Marino, Ross, Stewart, and Wagner voting no.
Okay. We're now back on the main motion that was made by Mayor Lot and seconded by Mr. Lepano. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Any further discussion on the main motion? Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to make an amendment to the main motion, or, and I don't know what line you have to tell me, so I'll just state what it is. To remove entryway to 14th and 15th Street in Ebor, and to reconfigure in some way to not allow for that entry.
I'll second that, man.
Who was that?
Maniscalco, second.
Seconded by Commissioner by Constable Maniscalco. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion?
I have a question here.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I don't know what item that is. It is not clear. The items seem to be jumping around a little bit, so it's kind of hard to figure out which items we're doing.
Ms. Alden, you want to tell which one that is? Hold on. Hold on, Ms. Alden, you want to say which one that is?
Yes, sir. This is part of the Downtown Interchange Project, which is partially funded, so it remains on our priority list for additional funding.
But she's asking, which item is it?
Yes, it's the Downtown Interchange Project. So it appears in a couple of places in the work program. So I just want to clarify that the project is the Downtown Interchange, and in particular, the ramps from the Downtown Interchange to 14th Street and 15th Street.
So would it be item 33?
On the priority list, but there's also funding in the work program. Well, I would encourage you to identify the road and the location concerned about so that we can be sure to get it in the document correctly.
Commissioner Kemp, do you want to clarify your motion?
Well, I thought I was clarifying it by doing exactly what Ms. Alden just said, by saying 14th and 15th Street in Ebor as a connection. Am I wrong, Ms. Alden?
That's correct. So it's a connection to the Downtown Interchange, yeah.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Constable Dingfelder, do you recognize?
Thank you. Two questions. One to Beth. That is, are the Ebor exits, are they standalone items? So in other words, if Commissioner Kemp's motion passed, would it only have impact on the two Ebor exits that we're talking about? Or would it impact the other interchange, the other changes that have been proposed to the interchange? For example, the second, you know, the additional, of addition length, additional lane going to I-4, coming southbound from 275.
Though, that depends entirely on the language of the motion. The language of, as I understand it right now, is specifically about those ramps at 14th Street and 15th. So you probably recall some with the previous presentations from District Seven, you know, which showed different pieces of that quick fix concept for the Downtown Interchange. So I assume this applies specifically to the 14th Street and 15th Street ramps.
And so they can be carved out of the other budgetary considerations if the motion is successful?
Secretary Quinn?
If I could just speak to the issue. So for those of you who may not be exactly familiar with this, this relates to the part of the Downtown Interchange Project that provides the second lane coming from southbound I-275 to go eastbound on I-4. As part of that, we worked very closely with the City of Tampa to talk about the plans that they have in the west part of Ebor City, and how we would tie the interstate ramps back into Ebor City. There was a lot of concern about taking all of the traffic that is going to go to what is in their current plans for very dense development compared to what's there today in that west part of Ebor. Having it all go to 22nd, 21st, turn right, go down to 7th or one of the other east-west streets, and head all the way back. We heard a lot of concerns about pedestrian safety on all those streets where the, basically, you'd have to go four times as far to get to your destination by not being able to have the exit at 14th and 15th. It's been in the city's plans for about 30 years in order to create a grid network through that area of town. What we did do is commit both to the city and to the residents in that area to work very close with them, to put in streetscape, to put in a lot of traffic calming and other safety measures that would make sure that it's a safe area for that to occur in. We've also funded the green spine through that area, and actually found a couple of million dollars more to allow the city to take their money off that project and use it on other improvements in the area, and we replaced it with some of our funds. So the generator of the traffic is not the ramp. The generator of the traffic is the much higher density development that's going to occur just off Nucio Parkway to the south of there that's already been approved, you know, by the city. So this was a direct request from the city. We think it's a good plan. It'll help disperse traffic in that area. And although I know there's some folks concerned about having an additional ramp exit there, we think in the long run, it will greatly serve that area. We've talked to the Ebor City Chamber of Commerce, many of the businesses out there, the Community College, and we've gotten a lot of support for that. We have not gotten much opposition. I'd say there's probably four or five people that have really been very opposed to it. But I'd say the vast majority of the folks that we've talked to said they thought it was a good idea, as long as we did the other improvements to make the road safer.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Secretary. The widening of the two lanes that moved traffic going north from I-275 to I-4, that some people call the flyover, you widen that, do you have to, does that, is that contingent upon having this exit at 14th Street or not?
You mean physically, is it required?
Because you said something at the beginning of your conversation just three minutes ago. I think you said something like, to have that second lane, you'd need that exit off of 14th Street. And I hadn't heard that before.
No, you don't need, you don't need the exit at 14th, 15th to have the second lane. But the main benefit of that exit at 14th, 15th is, you know, we've made some improvements. We built the connector. We made a lot of improvements to 21st, 22nd, to make it a more walkable, to try to make it a better road, and we wanted to try to get the trucks off of it so that people would be better. What we were seeing from the traffic projections was that if you just had traffic exit at 21st and 22nd, because of all the development that's proposed south of 14th and 15th down Nucio down there, the traffic is going to get off. And if they can't make that right onto 14th, 15th in there, they're going to go down to 21st and 22nd, make a right on 21st and 22nd, and then make another right, whether it be on 7th or another street, to get back to where they want to go. And so the purpose of the grid network is to help disperse some of that traffic. I think they said there was going to be an addition of, I forget, 30,000 cars or something because of the ramp. If you don't put the ramp there, you still have all but about 3,000 or 4,000 of those cars already going to be there because of the very dense development that's already proposed for that area. That's what's driving the traffic volumes, not the ramp. And so we agree with the city that by having a grid network in there to help disperse the traffic, as long as we can do robust, you know, streetscape, traffic calming, and other safety measures would be the best solution for that area. We did get letters from the mayor, from others, supporting that plan and asking us to do that.
Well, the difficult part, I don't understand, you were talking about development in that area, and there's going to be development. I can't quite wrap my arms around having development there, knowing that it's going to be more and more people there, but yet you're putting an exit off in that development. Can't quite put my arms around that one. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Great question. Mr. Quinn, you said that this was requested by the City of Tampa. What do you mean? The city council voted on it, just meant it to you? Or the mayor sent a letter requesting it officially? How, in what way was this?
We did receive, well, first, our dealings were with staff, and then the mayor responded as well, Mayor Castor. And they basically said, this is consistent with what we have envisioned for this portion of the town, of the city, and that it supports our development plan, and that by forcing all the traffic to go to 21st, 22nd, and putting it on that load will greatly overlay those, that road, as well as, we had some folks at the college that said, you know, if you make them go to 21st, 22nd, come back on 7th, you're going to have pedestrian problems. Those are the kind of things.
Thank you. I get that point. I just wanted to make clear officially where the request came from. And you're saying it was the mayor?
It was the city staff. It was the city staff, and then this has been worked on, though, well before, this has been worked on for 30 years. It's been in the plan. It's not anything that's been new. This has always been in the plan.
Mayor Buckhorn, then? Mayor Buckhorn?
I don't know whether Mayor Buckhorn ever but weighed in on this because this never became an issue until probably the last six months or so. The big problem came up with, there was concern in East Tampa that we were going to take away the interchange at 21st and 22nd. That's what was the big issue, was they thought we were going to move it to 14th, 15th. And in fact, what we told them was, no, nothing's changing at 21st, 22nd. You're just going to have an additional exit at 14th, 15th with a frontage road that can take you down to 21st, 22nd.
Constable Citra, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little early. I was going to make another amendment to this, but I will wait. I'll hold off until the discussion is done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Constable Dingfelder, this is just second time around on this. Let's make it quick.
Well, Secretary brings up a point that I think it's important to raise, is, Secretary, what sort of, I think any of us who use those exits realize there is a lot of backup at the 21st, 22nd exit. And I'm just wondering what sort of relief this, you know, this additional exit, six blocks short, will provide for the 21st, 22nd pair?
One of the big, one of the big benefits of this new configuration, right now, if you are coming on 275, and you want to go and get off at the 21st, 22nd exit, from either direction, you have to weave across traffic in order to get there. You have to weave across, if you're coming southbound, you have to weave across the people coming from northbound 275 to go on I-4. If you're coming the other direction, you have to weave across the traffic that's entering from the left side. This takes all the traffic to the outside, and so you don't have to do any of that weaving on I-4, right there in the first part of I-4 between 275 and 21st, 22nd. It takes you onto this separate ramp where you isolate that traffic, and all the other traffic can flow without any of that congestion. That's a big part of the thousand crashes a year that we get in the interchange is right there in that junction. So this takes all that traffic out and makes a direct connect down into 21st, 22nd without ever having to get on I-4. And so I think it's a really good improvement, but...
My question was more quantitative, though. Does your modeling show a significant relief for 21st, 22nd by adding 14th and 15th?
Yeah, it will, it will provide relief, and we can't compare it to today. We got to compare it to what the model says it'll be like 20 years from now. And so it shows significant improvement related to the future traffic projections.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Any further discussion amendment to the motion? I have an amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Constable Maniscalco. Please call the roll on the amendment.
Miller?
Yes.
Klug?
No.
Citra?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Harden?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lepano?
No.
Lot?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Marino?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ross?
Oh.
Smith?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Motion failed six to ten with members Klug, Dingfeller, Hagan, Harden, Lepano, Lot, Marino, Ross, Stewart, and Wagner voting no.
Okay. Constable Citro, you had an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In the CAC's motions, number four, which is AKA the section five of TB Next, in between Two Seventy Five and West Shore Downtown, I'd like to have that also removed, if we could please, that's my motion.
Maniscalco, second. That's a motion by Constable Citro, seconded by Constable Maniscalco. Is any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Smith, could you please...
You recognize?
Just to repeat the motion, please.
Commissioner, Constable Citro, would you please repeat your motion?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, which is, again, the CAC's motion to accept that, and my motion is for to strike the section five of TB Next, which is the construction or post-construction from Two Seventy Five between West Shore and Downtown.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendments to the motion? Any further discussion on the amendments to the motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Miller?
No.
No.
Petra?
Yes.
Dingfeller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Harden?
No, no.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lepano?
No.
Lot?
No.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Marino?
No.
Overman? Ross?
Oh.
Smith?
No.
She voted no.
No. Wagner?
No.
Motion failed four to twelve with members Miller, Klug, Dingfeller, Hagan, Harden, Lepano, Lot, Marino, Ross, Smith, Stewart, and Wagner voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Before we go to further, Ms. Stewart, you're having a problem, your mic, for some reason is muffled, we can't understand what you're saying, Ms. Stewart, okay? We're now back on the main motion by Mayor Lot, seconded by Mr. Lepano. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. So, you know, and we had a lot of great public comment noting that the overall priorities in funding roads more than transit or biking and walking doesn't reflect the community's priorities, and I agree with them on that, and I know we all appreciate all the good public comment that we heard today, very, very considered. But I want to talk about something else that you mentioned and that the Tampa CRA voted to oppose, and that was toll lanes, the Lexus lanes, the luxury express lanes. In this day and time, it is especially appropriate to review these projects in terms of equity and social justice. The toll lanes on the interstate, which the Tampa CRA opposed, would provide luxury express lanes. On these luxury lanes, rich people would be able to afford to pay extra to whiz by the poor people stuck in this lower traffic that would be clogging up the free lanes, and the injustice is magnified by putting these luxury lanes through communities, various communities whose citizens won't be able to afford to drive on them. This is, in effect, using public money to segregate public infrastructure into first-class and second-class, economy-class levels, and this is why I generally oppose luxury lanes. Now, the MPO is in the process of discussing the pros and cons of tolling that creates luxury lanes, and we are scheduling some workshops coming up in October for future discussion. Also, we know that other toll lanes have failed in various ways, and right here tonight, we have evidence that the tolls are an inefficient funding mechanism. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine of our tip, we see that on our own toll roads, it costs quite a bit more maintaining the tolling mechanisms than it costs maintaining the actual toll roads themselves. It costs over sixteen point two million dollars to maintain the toll, but only fourteen point six million dollars in our five-year tip to maintain those roads with the tolls. And in the meantime, we do have a memo tonight in our packet from FDOT on page sixty-four, and this memo sounds like FDOT is getting more flexible about toll lanes and becoming open to managing express lanes other than great tolling such as, you know, HOV or some other vehicle eligibility standards. And so my question tonight is, you know, whether we, I could make some kind of an amendment, and I'd ask maybe Mr. Gwen or Beth, Ms. Alden, to help me understand if there's some way we can strike the language that commits us to toll luxury lanes in this tip, and make clear that we are keeping our options open to other ways of managing express lanes so that we give ourselves more time with the upcoming workshops and everything else to consider the social justice and equity implications before committing to toll luxury lanes.
Mr. Secretary?
Yes, Chairman. If I could address that, so, a few years ago, our policy essentially was that any additional capacity on the interstate would be toll express lanes. A couple of years ago, we eliminated that, so that was not a requirement. Over the last couple of years, our policy has become more flexible to give us other options, but with toll being one of the options to look at. The goal is to try and create a reliable travel time corridor within an overall corridor that will likely be congested if we made all lanes just general-purpose lanes. But what we're able to do is to implement things like allowing for carpools, vanpools, transit. One of the things I really think is a big advantage of these express lanes, when this project in the West Shore interchange is finished, the express lanes will connect downtown St. Pete at Three Seventy Five, up all the way to the Gateway Center, further north into West Shore, to the Tampa International Airport, to the Veterans Expressway and Courtney Causeway, and to Ashley. So you have a premium transit corridor for regional transit right there in those express lanes. And if we can make those lanes operate at a reliable travel time, especially as traffic grows as it's projected to do, transit will become more and more attractive. In fact, in South Florida, that's exactly what we found. We have over five or six thousand passengers a day using express bus in express lane, and so it's very viable. I think, you know, we've got eight years or so before this will be open and operational. By then, I'm hoping technology will be there that will allow us to detect how many people are in a vehicle, and then maybe we can let HOV use that lane. Or we may be able to find a way to let connected vehicles that are able to connect to other vehicles use one of those lanes to increase the capacity that way. We are always going to be open to be able to change it. But if we build the roads for tolls, it looks no different than if we build the roads for no tolls. It's a matter of a policy and a decision made about how we want to manage the traffic. So we will continue to look at all the options in the future. Tolling is what we've shown to this point, but that doesn't mean that when we get eight years from now and we flip the switch and open the lane, that that's what has to be there.
Commissioner Smith, is that... I hear your voice. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
So we don't need to amend this in any way to keep our options open. This does not commit us to toll, straight up, is what you're saying, it does not commit us to luxury lanes.
Right. We will continue to look at all options with the overall, and it may be, maybe there's tolls for a certain period of time in the day, but the rest of the day is free. We just have to look at how we can manage the traffic, but we'll be working together at that point to figure out how we want to manage the traffic. So it's as easy as flipping a switch if that's what it comes to. The one thing, just want to tell you, is the revenue that it generates is not the objective of the express lanes, it's not a revenue generating tool. In fact, most of that revenue gets poured back into either maintaining the equipment and then operating, operations and maintenance for the transit fleet that operates within that corridor.
Thank you.
Mayor Lot, did I hear your voice? Mayor Lot?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine. I think, I think Commissioner Smith answered what I was going to ask, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. And I think, too, the earlier amendment, I think the issue that Commissioner Smith raised is part of the problem. I would like to propose amending our tip to eliminate toll features associated with our design without coming back to us for approval. So it would actually make the priorities you decide, for example, HOV, all those other things possible, and unless you have to have tolls to make it work. So it's by design, it won't have tolls unless you come back to us and say the only way we can make this work is with it, and that has to have approval at that point. Because what we're, what we're hearing, I think, from a few folks at the table, as well as our community, is they are very concerned about toll features being included and are not willing to move other projects that are important to our growth because they don't trust that tolls won't be part of it. So I'd like to hear more, but I would suggest that maybe if we just eliminate the toll option without special approval by the, by the MPO at a future date when it's necessary, then we can go there. But if we continue to bring up tolls as a possibility, we're going to have difficulty getting a lot of these projects approved, and I'll stop there.
I thought you said you'd make an amendment.
I will, but I think I've got some fans here that would like to comment on it, so I'll wait to hear the comments.
Constable Dingfeller, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great words spoken by Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Overman, on the toll lanes. Fifteen years ago, when I was on the MPO last, I spoke against toll lanes, I spoke against the Lexus lanes, as they were called at the time. Now they seem to have taken on different names, but at the end of the day, it's the same thing. Ariella, I think, I can put it better in terms of social justice and equity, and at the end of the day, what are we here for? We're here to set policy and at least make recommendations. I know we're not the last word on a lot of this, but we can make strong recommendations in terms of how we feel about these issues. And I respect the Secretary greatly, I think he's done a super job in the last couple of years since he came, and I love some of the ideas that you spoke to, Mr. Secretary, regarding to HOV and some of those other things. But in fifteen years, I haven't been convinced toll lanes are the way to go, and I'm still not convinced, and when Ms. Overman makes that motion, I will second it.
Constable Citro, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Smith, you are correct. As former chair of the CRA for the city of Tampa, yes, we did make that motion, asking FDOT to eliminate all Lexus lanes, all toll lanes throughout the interchange from West Shore to Downtown, Downtown all the way out to Barris. Yes, you are correct. We asked them not to do that. My concern is for my beloved West Tampa. People are not going to be able to get on to this interstate to get Downtown to work and be available to use those Lexus lanes. That's why I was asking that we take them off this tip budget. Thank you, Constable Smith. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Lot?
Mayor Lot, you recognize?
Thank you. I have a question for District Secretary. From listening to your comments a while ago, and I think tonight, we don't, we're not necessarily having to say whether we're for any type of lane, okay, or how the, you're going to build a lane, how it's going to be used will be determined later, okay? If we strike that, there's no way there could ever be any type of toll on those lanes at all, does that affect this project going forward, or how does that affect you?
All right, so, a couple of years ago, we came around and we asked the whole region to help us to find the support regionally, to go to the governor and ask for one point four billion dollars to build the West Shore area interchange. And we got letters from this board and from the MPOs in Pinellas, Pasco, every city in the region, the transit agencies, the business community, essentially everybody, the airports, ports, they all supported this project, and it was a toll project. That's what we went and sold to get the project funding for in the third year of the work program. It's not even in the fifth year where you normally get work, we were able to get this pulled in. For me to go back now and tell them that the number one regional priority from last year is no longer something that they want, I, we fought hard to get this money. We all fought hard to get this money. You did a lot of hard work, and they hurt it as a region in Tallahassee to get this money. For me to go back now and say, nope, we've changed our mind, I can't tell you what would happen. I would hope I could try to keep the money, but I can't guarantee it. You know, things are going to be tough in the next few years, we all know it. The revenues are down, the gas tax revenues, the things that get our funding. We're going to be protecting our projects the best we can. If you want to take a chance and perhaps, you know, have something happen with that funding, you certainly can make that move, but I would tell you that, that's not what we went to sell with when we went last year with all of the support from the region.
Mr. Chairman, we voted...
But right now, we don't have the technology to do it.
Is Joe Lepano...
Excuse me, excuse me. Mayor Lot has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I understand what you're saying, but I'm also going to ask a question where if, if we leave the lanes, the option for tolling in the tip right now, what you're telling us is that over the next eight years, you will work on additional measures to come up with alternatives to toll lanes, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I think what we're saying is, is that right now, we don't have the technology to really allow us to make the fight that we want to make. So right now, one of the tools we have is tolling as a regulator on the flow of traffic. In the future, I hope we have the ability to use other things to bring into that equation. But right now, we don't, and I would hate to have to go back and change direction at this point when we've, we've got everything here to go, the project's ready to go, and to go back and ask for a major change in the project and hope that they say, okay, you're still good. I don't know.
So Lepano, you recognize?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that I agree with Mayor Lot. I think it's important to remember that, you know, the airport is a major economic engine, and if we don't provide access to and from the airport, we will lose tremendous amount of tourism and business traffic, and whether it's... business traffic. And whether it's a toll lane or just a lane, um, I just want to make sure that we can get in and out of the airport because we're going to grow. So, um, that's all I have to say, Chairman. I just want to make sure that we provide the capacity.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wagner, you recognize?
Yes, sir. One of the key, um, statements that I thought I heard the Secretary make was that if there is tolling, uh, there will be premium transit in the quarters. And if there is tolling, that would be one of the sources to pay for the operations and maintenance of that premium transit that goes into that quarter. So it's a reinvestment back into transportation for our community that actually does a very good job of addressing the social equity and environmental justice issues in terms of providing similar reliability and travel time saving to those who couldn't otherwise afford it. That's a very key and very important thing to recognize in the concept that the Secretary presented. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, sir. And, and thank you, Secretary Glenn. I realize that you fought very hard, and I think everybody did. Um, but I'm not sure everybody fought for it because it was a toll project. And that's my point. So if there were a way to word this motion that, that would not jeopardize your project, that would prohibit any further design to be, um, toll dependent, let's say, without approval by the MPO board, could that accomplish where we're trying to go? Because I, too, would not like to see all the work that was done to get that intersection done and the project done that's already been approved. You'd worked very hard at that, and I know a lot of people did, too. But I keep hearing this, well, we got it approved because of that, and now we have to do that. And you know what? The people who need to be able to get around here without being able to afford tolls or choose to non-toll, um, don't like that answer any more than I do. Um, so i- if there's a way to word this, that any future road design, it's not already been committed to, uh, would require specific MPO approval if tolls are part of the design, then that's my motion. Because I, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to harm your project. I do not want to harm what you've already gotten and advocated for. But I'm, I'm tired of hearing, oh, these are express lanes, and then all of a sudden they're toll lanes, and then we're approved, and then we're stuck. And I don't want to play that game anymore.
What we do is, I mean, obviously, you can make whatever motion that you feel comfortable, but I would suggest that if you wanted to, to make a motion to request that we continue to work with you up until the point of this project being open to traffic, to look for options other than tolls, um, then I think that could be a certainly, uh, something we can certainly commit to do. If there's some in the motion that changes the basic premise of the project as it's been presented so far, that's what I would be worried about. But we would work with you. And eight years from now, I don't know what technology will be available that will allow us to do things we can't do today. Like, look at how many people are in a car. How do you, how do you tell? By then, maybe we have that technology, and we can let people in car pools and, and HOV and other things in there. But, um, we, you know, we've gotten to the, to the finish line, and we've gotten in the end zone. I hate to see a penalty flag, you know, send us back and fighting again. We, we, we have, we have gotten to, to where we want it to be. And I just don't want, I would prefer not to risk it. That's just my view.
I, I too. And that's where we have a penalty flag. We have a penalty flag because we see great projects being designed that are taking into consideration, uh, high-density traffic, transit corridors, available of high, uh, high occupancy.
Commissioner, what, what is it you want to do, Commissioner Overman?
I'm going to make a motion that, um, future tip projects must outline specifically whether or not they are toll design dependent. Any, any future project.
Commissioner. Excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm calling Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. Any future transit projects, not already approved and designed, are required to outline if they are tolls specific in design as a policy approval to amend our tip and future transportation improvement program policy. And it could be adopted.
Is there a, Sir? Is there a, Sir, Chairman?
Commissioner Kemp, I just have a question. You said transit.
Is there a second? Is there a second, first, Commissioner Kemp? Is there a second?
I wanted to know what the motion, clarification.
Transportation. Did I say transit? I'm sorry. Any future transportation project that incorporates an express lane or express traffic specifically outline whether or not it's toll dependent.
I'll second that.
Let me, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Let me ask a question. No, I ask this, Mr. Does this motion have anything to do with the tip we're talking about tonight, or is this just a policy position, policy is something you put into place?
Um, yes, it does, because many of the projects in this particular list include express lane projects. And so, um, it would impact several of the projects within this list.
So what does it do under those projects?
With the exception of the West Shore, I'm not sure. The design hasn't been completed at this point.
I think, I think that's where you got some confusion on, on your amendment. I'm seeing faces, and they're like, what? Uh, because the amendment does not really, I'll leave it alone. Uh, is there any, is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Dinkfield, you recognize? Councilman Dinkfield, you recognize?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I, I know I'm, I'm moved back on this board, and I appreciate that. And I know from what everybody's said, everybody worked very hard to get that money, big money, from the state and the feds to get this project going. I don't want to risk that. I don't want to jeopardize that. However, Mr. Secretary, I have to ask a question, very straightforward, and I know you're a straightforward answer, but you didn't go to Tallahassee or Washington, I would assume, and, and say, we want, we want to build this, this road, we want to build this toll road. I would assume you said, we've got some severe traffic problems, we need some express lanes through there, we need to improve the bridge, et cetera, et cetera. And tolling was at most a side issue. I mean, it's hard for me to imagine otherwise. So that, if I can just ask that question, Mr. Chairman, and let me, let me follow up after I get any.
Yeah. Well, the answer is, we absolutely did, did show that. That was a major premise of how we showed our traffic management, so that we could show that we weren't just going to add more lanes that were congested like the rest of them. That was a traffic management strategy that we showed in our plan. So it's all along been part of that. It's also in, in all the other projects that we've been building and planning. It's in the project in the Gateway area that's under construction today. It's in the project that we have going forward on Howard Franklin Bridge. And it's in the project that goes from the Howard Franklin Bridge south into downtown St. Pete. It's always been shown in the West Shore interchange as being a told express lanes as well. So it's nothing new, but it is absolutely part of what we, we use to show how the, the project would benefit, um, traffic management.
Okay. Well, it is rela-, it is somewhat new, because the last time I was on was eight years ago, and none of our projects had toll, were tolling our interstate, uh, you know, projects. So to the best of my knowledge, um, at, at least if they were, if they were, they were deeply hidden. And, um, and, and they weren't anywhere near coming to fruition. But what I'm hearing you basically say now is that, and, and I, we all know how these, these things take a life of their own. And if we don't stop tolling now, then it's going to be a reality. Okay? And with all due respect to the Secretary, that, you know, it's, it's tolling is there, and there's no reason for them to take it out. And, and, and that, you know, that's the way it is. I, I think, you know, I, I would love a suggestion from the Secretary or from Beth in regard to how we can take out tolling without, you know, risking the project, um, or at least put some very, 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 very strong language in that we, that this board and this body, assuming that one of these motions passes, does not want tolling, um, on, on these roads in Hillsborough County. What you do in Pinellas or elsewhere is not our business. So Beth, um, you can help me out with that, any language for a motion. And Kim, with all due respect.
First and foremost, Commissioner, Councilman Dinkfield, we have a motion on the floor right now. There's a motion on the floor.
I would only say the motion is not strong enough, with all due respect to my good friend, Ms. Overman. So.
Well, I got that. Uh, Mayor Lot, you recognize?
The, um, if I can ask, offer just maybe a suggestion to Commissioner Overman here, and, uh, maybe, maybe it helps, maybe it doesn't. And, and I'd like to just make a suggestion, and maybe the Secretary could weigh in on it. Um, and, uh, because I, what I thought you were saying was, um, like a policy going forward when future projects come towards the MPO. And to me, that, to me, was more of a policy decision. We'd make it a, uh, either later on tonight or another MPO meeting. But regarding this tip amendment that we're approving tonight, um, could maybe, maybe, you know, could I suggest you make a motion that would request FDOT to continue considering and discussing alternatives, uh, to tolling as a congestion management strategy? Because the congestion management strategy, he's saying that over and over and over again, he has to build a show of congested management strategy, he's going to continue to move this project forward and get the funding for it. And to ask FDOT to come back at a future FDOT, uh, FDOT meeting, um, to discuss those options, um, allowed under, you know, whatever the policy may be that allows him to move this project forward. But we're asking him to bring other alternatives, uh, back to us in the future. But it doesn't stop this project, it doesn't stop funding.
That's my point. Mayor Lot, it sounds like this is a policy issue. You're talking about Commissioner Overman, that the motion that you made, instead of a dealing right now with the tip that we're dealing with, it sounds like more of a policy motion that you're making.
I, I don't, thank you, Chair. Um, I don't disagree, except for we keep saying it at our regular MPO meetings, but we address it when we get to the tip approvals. So that's my, that's my challenge, is, you know, if tolling is the first, first go-to for managing traffic and throughput, and there's no barrier to entry there, it's going to be the solution. It's going to be the go-to instead of all the others. And that's why, as I said, if you're going to put a project there that demand management, traffic management is part of it, like express lanes, that they have to get an exception by asking for a toll rather than having that be the go-to. And I'm try, I'm trying to figure out how to word it, but it, like I said, it, we talk about it at MPO meetings, at regular meetings, and it's here where we find out it's a toll road that we've got to move forward on. And that, I think, just needs to stop.
Mayor Ross, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a procedural question. We have a, Mayor Lot's motion is still pending on the floor. Don't we need to vote on that before we entertain another motion?
No, sir. These are amendments to the motion.
Oh, sir, this is not amendment to the motion. This is a separate motion. This is not.
She made, she made this amendment to the motion by Mayor Lot.
Uh huh. Uh, okay.
What we're going, what we're going through now, Mayor Lot made a motion that was seconded by Mr. Lepano. We've gone through amendments, and we're now on another amendment. When we're done with the amendments, whether they failed, uh, or not failed, if an amendment passes, it's then part of the motion. Right now, we're on amendments.
What I heard, okay, well, that's not what I heard. What I heard her saying was she didn't want to amend it on this project because she didn't want to jeopardize the project like the Secretary said we might, and that she just wanted this to apply to future projects. That's the motion that I heard.
I heard it as an amendment.
It, it.
Commissioner Smith?
Hold on, hold on.
Could you clarify the motion then?
Good. Could we hear from Ms. Alden? She's had her hand up several times, and I think she can assist with this, if at all possible, so that we can get this amendment disposed up?
Alden, you recognize?
Thank you, sir.
I didn't see your hand. I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry. You got to throw your hand up.
Everybody stretch. Um, so, uh, the tip that we have in front of us right now doesn't, does not actually specify whether this would be told or not. To your point, Commissioner Overman, that it's not, uh, it, it's not clear on that. The, the advantage of that is it's not committing us to anything at this point. So, um, I, I hear you saying that you'd like us to be making a clearer statement about this. Um, I think ultimately having this board pass a, a resolution of some kind could be helpful. Um, I think that we, we have the time to do that when we have our, our Board Managed Lanes workshop, and we hear some examples from other, uh, of how, how they've used managed lanes. Um, but I, you know, in the meantime, for, for tonight, is there, is there something that we could do? And so I'm reminded of some of our, our previous tip hearings in the last couple of years where, um, there have been, uh, amendments that approve contingent on certain things happening. Um, and so one suggestion might be, uh, you know, an amendment that we're approving the tip contingent on, uh, the DOT, working with the MPO on the, on the policy for how these new express lanes will be managed. And, and maybe go farther than that, saying to reduce congestion and ex, and expand more choices. Uh, I, I don't know. I'm kind of making this up as I go along right now.
Well, so am I. So then, that's what makes it fun.
Mr. Chair, can I, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Hold on.
This is Cameron Clark. Can, can you hear me, sir?
Okay, Cameron, I'm sorry. The legal mind, Mr. Cameron Clark.
No. I just had a quick, uh, thought, um, listening to Commissioner Overman's motion.
Can you speak up, sir?
Yes, sir. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, I can hear you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, so there's a, honestly, fairly obscure provision in the MPO statute that states that, uh, once a project reaches the design phase of preliminary engineering, uh, project is in the tip. Uh, it can only be removed from the tip after that point if both the MPO and DOT agree. But up to that point, the MPO board has the ability annually at its tip hearing, or frankly, at any time during the year, to amend its tip to take projects out. I, I was listening to what Commissioner Overman's saying, and it sounds like, um, an important feature is the board wants to be able to identify if a project's going to be utilizing tolls before they're locked into, uh, having the project in the tip. They, they don't want to reach that point of no return without knowing if there's going to be toll lanes. Um, and, and perhaps a way to do that would be just to, and this could be, this could be independent of the tip, uh, vote tonight, but you could, um, through a policy or resolution, just direct DOT that any time a project is one year away from, uh, the design stage, so that a year in advance of, of being locked in, that DOT identify if there's going to be any toll lanes associated with it. Um, that would give the board time to consider, you know, pretty well in advance if they wanted to proceed with that project the next time it came up. And that's all I had, sir.
Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for that information. Um, so I guess my question before I either withdraw the motion or push forward with it is, uh, are, what projects on here are at that stage where we have no point of return? Because it, based on the descriptions I have here, that is very difficult to discern.
Commissioner Alden?
Yes, sir. So the, the West Shore Interchange project that we've just been talking about that includes express lanes through it, um, that has a design build phase starting in fiscal '24, uh, you know, which is July 1 of 2023.
Is that the only one?
Um, the Howard Franklin Bridge is, uh, already going forward.
Right. So we're already passed on that one. It's just the West Shore Interchange that is subject to design and would be harmed by this rule? Is that accurate?
That, that's my understanding.
The, the West Shore Interchange is already under design.
So it would not be impacted. It would just be anything going forward.
The, um, the only projects I can think of in Hillsborough County that might fall into this, because if you remember, as part of our, um, discussions-
because if you remember, as part of our, um, discussions with the community and others, we eliminated them in, in segment seven. We, we did not have any express lanes in segment seven. We don't have any express lanes in segment six. And right now, there's nothing in segment eight, which is, is I-4 from, um, from Connector and 50th around there out to Plant City. That would be one that in the future, we could come back to you with our strategy on, on that segment. But that, and then on 75, which is even further out, um, on I-75, we have, um, express lanes. But I think by the time that those projects would come to you, we'd probably have a lot more understanding of what technologies are available to us and what we could do to, to manage traffic at that time.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So if this motion goes forward, it would not impact your project because the design has already been included, right?
Correct, the West Shore Interchange, there's, there's a design phase that we do now, which is to get it to where we can get it. There is an actual design build contract that takes our design and takes it to the next level, which is the building it. So we, we designed it up to a certain point, which we're doing now, and then we hand that to all contractor teams that may wanna pursue it to take that design and go forward with it.
Okay, let me go ask Mr. Clark the answer to that question, just in case I didn't make myself clear.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the que, can I, uh, question, Mr. Overman?
So, based on the, the West Shore project, um, the secretary has indicated that that sign is already started. So if we were to adopt a policy that any toll strategy or toll project would have to come back for special approval by, by the, by the MPO, but we have to do it after the design phase, as you had described earlier, it should not impact his project, should it? Cause he's already got the design started and approved.
Well, in, in terms of being able to take, to remove the project or modify it, but I wanna say, and, and Ms. Alden, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe, does that segment that the secretary is describing actually mention tolls in it, in the, uh, in the tip itself? I don't remember if it actually says the word tolls. So, and, and my point is, I'm not sure for that pers- perspective, it, tolls might not even be locked in on that segment. It's, I don't, if I recall, I don't, I, what I'm saying is I don't recall if tolls are mentioned even for that segment or not.
Okay.
Commissioner Overman, what is it, what, what is it?
The tip does not include, the, the tip does not specify tolls.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm gonna withdraw.
But if I could clarify.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, she's withdrawn an amendment.
I'm gonna withdraw the motion, but I will bring it to the next MPO mo, meeting for approval.
Okay, she's withdrawn her amendment. We're now back on the main motion by Mayor Lot, seconded by Mr. Lepano. Is there any further discussion on the main motion?
Yes.
Any further, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. These amendments that I'm suggesting won't take as long. Thank you. Um, I want to, um, remove line 46, um, from the tip. That is the automated vehicle infrastructure, um, what Hart, 5 million requested in the tip, um, for this unproven technology, which from what I can understand is a parking garage. Um, I don't think it's a, an appropriate, um, priority, um, to have in the tip for transit. And, you know, I feel like, again, it's just an emphasis on, um, single occupancy vehicles and, um, and not well taken as a priority for Hart. So that's line 46.
Ding Felder said.
Pardon?
Ding Felder seconds.
You have a motion, amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Councilman Dayfelder. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I, uh, have asked and asked about this project, um, from FDOT and, and Hart, and I've, I've gotten very little answer. It's, it's, uh, if, if there's any there, there, it's, um, it's not fleshed out in any way. There's, there's really no, uh, I haven't been able to, to find or dig up any detail behind this project. It's kind of a, a aspirational $5 million placeholder, and, and we know we have, um, higher priorities for our, uh, transit funding. So I fully support this motion.
Mr. Wagner, you recognize?
Just a question, what's the source of the project? Did the project come from a Hart program? Or what program, what agency put this project forward?
Ms. Alden?
Yes, sir, uh, this was on Hart's request list for prioritization. There's a copy of a letter in your agenda packet.
So it's a, it's a request for prioritization, it's not actually a funded project at this time?
That's right.
And the only other question I have, are the lists that come from Hart approved by the Hart board before they come into the tip?
We've made that request.
Okay, thank you.
We're not going there, folks. I know what y'all getting ready to do, we're not going there. No, 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 no. Come on, Commissioner Smith.
I think it's important to answer.
You recognize, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, I think it's important to answer Mr. Wagner's question. Um, and these projects did not get, um, approved by the Hart board. They were submitted by staff before our policy where we, whereby we requested that agencies, um, send these, send their policies via their, uh, their legislative bodies. And so this one, uh, got into the process earlier, um, than, than that policy. So next year, Hart will be doing it that way, but this time, they didn't.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? We have an amendment by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Councilman Dayfelder. Please call the roll.
Miller? Klug?
No.
Citra? Ding Felder? Hagan?
No.
Harden? Kemp?
Yes.
Lepano? Lot?
No.
Maniscalco? Marino?
No.
Overman? Ross? Smith? Wagner? Motion failed seven to nine with members Miller, Klug, Hagan, Lepano, Lot, Marino, Ross, Stewart, and Wagner voting no.
Now back on the main motion by Mayor Lot, seconded by Mr. Lepano. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, so one more short motion. Um, I'd like to move the CSX study from line 48 in the tip up to, um, I think, uh, it was line, uh, 33, um, is a, a place to give it a higher, uh, priority, um, in this tip, to do a study of the CSX tracks to make it possible to look at converting them from freight to passenger.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Overman, amendment to the motion. Is there further discussion, amendment? Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Harden, Harden would like to be recognized.
Yes, Harden, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Director Gwen, um, is it possible to move this further up the list? Or does it have to move to a blank spot in the list?
This is your list, you can move it anywhere from one to the bottom.
I would support this motion, I would, uh, it would be nice if it were moved further up the list.
Ms. Alden, you recognize?
Thank you, sir. So this falls into a category of projects that we identify in the Long Range Transportation Plan as major investments. Um, so those are generally, uh, road widening projects, fixed guideway transit projects. Um, so, you know, the, the big ticket items. And, uh, so Commissioner Kemp's motion would be to move this project up to the top of that category.
Mayor Lot, you recognize?
Um, thank you very much. Beth Alden, um, is there a reason why this wasn't already moved up when it was presented to us? Do you have, uh, any rationale why you had it currently ranked in its current ranking?
Um, so the, the projects in that category are, are ranked by, um, uh, by congestion levels and by job density. We also take into account the recommendations of the, the regional groups. So the Regional MPO Chairs Coordinating Committee and the TMA Leadership Group. Um, at the, at the regional level, um, we've been, we've been focusing on trying to move those Tampa Bay Next projects forward. Um, this past year, the TMA Leadership Group, uh, added to its priority list, uh, this, this study of the CSX rail corridors. Uh, and, uh, so it's, uh, it, it's not nearly as extensive a project as the, as the Tampa Bay Next projects. So it would be unlikely to jeopardize those Tampa Bay Next projects if you did put up to the top of that category.
Well, then that question is, do you support where you currently have it, um, listed in your priority? Or do you support it as the, um, uh, recommended by Commissioner Kemp?
I think the challenge with that particular project is where do we go with it after it's, after we have finished the study? Cause we're, you know, we're still obviously challenged with, um, how to, to find those local funds to match a federal grant to actually build a fixed guideway transit system. So that, that's our big challenge. Uh, but if this board would like us to try to advance, uh, another major study, then I'd love to help you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Is there any further discussion? See none, please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Klug?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Klug, could you repeat your vote?
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, Citra?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Harden?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Lepano?
No.
I know.
Maniscalco? Marino? Overman?
Yes.
Ross?
Oh.
Smith?
Yes.
Wagner? Motion carried nine to seven with members Miller, Hagan, Lepano, Lot, Marino, Ross, and Stewart voting no.
We're now back on the amended, uh, motion by, um, Mayor Lot, seconded by Mr. Lepano. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? This is the main motion, ladies and gentlemen, the main motion to pass the tip as amended. See no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Call the roll.
Klug? Citra?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Kemp? Lepa, Lepano?
Yes.
Lot? Maniscalco? Marino?
Yes.
Overman?
I have to ask for, uh, help with the motion. I had a five-year-old that needed to lay down and go to bed, get a kiss goodnight. So could you repeat the motion?
This is a motion to pass the tip as amended.
Excellent, thank you, I'll vote yes.
Thank you, uh, Ross?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carried 13 to three with members Miller, Kemp, and Maniscalco voting no.
Okay, move the executive director report, Ms. Alden.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just a, a couple of announcements for you. Uh, we've already spent some time this evening talking about our board workshop on managed lanes. So just a reminder that we do have that scheduled for October the 14th. Uh, our next board meeting, um, is currently on the calendar, Tuesday, August the 4th, with the Policy Committee meeting a week in advance. I would, I ask if this board would be willing to hold its meeting, uh, on July 28th in place of the Policy Committee. Uh, and the reason for that is, uh, we will be able to continue to conduct business virtually through July. Uh, it's not clear whether the governor will extend the executive order, allowing us to conduct this virtually for another month. Um, and so, uh, I'd ask if there are any objections to moving our next board meeting to Tuesday, July the 28th at 9:00 a.m.
So the objection, the objection, without objection, we move it to the 28th.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, our regional meeting of the MPO Chairs Coordinating Committee on July 10th, uh, will also be held virtually. Uh, and there, there will be a, uh, Zoom link, uh, emailed out, um, this Thursday. It will also be posted up on our website for anyone who participates. So the, uh, MPO Committee, um, will meet at 10:00 a.m. The TMA Leadership Group will meet, and this is a correction to what's on the agenda here, it's been changed. The May Leadership Group will meet before the MPO Chairs, the TMA will be at 9:00. So then the, uh, MPO Chairs at 10:00, and a joint meeting of the MPO Chairs with the Florida MPO Alliance, um, starting at 11:00. Um, so that'll be a more compressed meeting schedule since we're no longer having to bill into the timeframe. Our Vision Zero Leadership Summit is scheduled for Tuesday, September 22nd, um, at, uh, Julian B. Lane Riverfronts in Tampa. Uh, we're proposing to have our, our speakers, our panelists, our, our, our Policy Committee members to be, um, present in the, in a large room where we could social distance. Uh, and then the rest of us participate virtually. We, we do have some great speakers lined up for that, and we'll be addressing some of the topics that we brought up earlier in the year of how do we make progress on safety, uh, whether or not that we have the funding available with sales tax. Um, one other thing that I wanted to mention is that, uh, we were very pleased to participate, participate at the staff level in helping to create the, uh, city of Tampa's intersection murals this past weekend, uh, and in particular to help sponsor the Black Lives themed mural in downtown. Um, and, uh, And, uh, we also had some good news, uh, last week, um, that our resilient Tampa Bay study, the one looking at how do we make our, our transportation more resilient to extreme weather, uh, was actually recognized nationally by the, the National Association of Movement Organizations, um, with a, an excellence, uh, in regional planning. We're sharing that award with the Tampa Bay Regional. Um, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're now moving to, uh, old and new business. I have to appoint a chair to the Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board. Councilman Vier was on, uh, chairing that before, before he stepped down, or however it worked out that he's not here anymore. So I need to appoint a chair to that. I'm asking that, are there volunteers at this point before I appoint someone? Any volunteers? Any volunteers? Okay, since you all want me to appoint someone, I'm gonna flip a coin and say, Commissioner Smith, you're not the chair.
Oh. Miller?
No, you, you, what?
I'm appointed to that board by Hart. I, I believe I represent Hart.
What we're gonna do now is you're gonna, you're gonna chair it for us, and we'll find, let Hart get another person.
All right.
All right?
All right.
That was good, I like that. Um, is there any further business to come before us tonight? Any further business to come before us tonight? Any further business to come before us tonight? Hearing none? Uh, everyone stay safe, uh, be careful, uh, and we'll adjourn.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bye-bye.